One Friday he gets it, that that would work out for them to have a little bit of extra time on a weekend. Which sounded good, but I said, well, we can't go over it. I said, the board's objective here is no overtime other than in a storm situation where they gotta come in clean sidewalks or whatever the case is. So we weren't after, we're wanting to get rid of all the overtime we get paid. And, well, when this was all got figured up, he thought wrong and I thought, I just didn't catch it as he was explaining it to me. And I, anyway, Terry brought it to our attention that that'll end up creating two, two and a half hours of overtime for me each pay period, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's obviously defeating our purpose, so we're gonna have to revisit that and see if there's any way we could give them any kind of a little. You know, since we took away a fair amount of income from them, you know, from years prior. I mean, even with our raise that we gave them for this year, they were still paycheck short. So we were just, I was, you know, talking with him and just trying to come up with some kind of little, it wasn't gonna cost us hours, it wasn't gonna cost us money. But obviously it did, so we're trying to figure out a way to correct that. So we need to put our five noggins together, maybe six noggins together, see if there's something, or if there isn't anything. Then we just kinda continue to march with, no, I'm sorry, you're just gonna do forty each week. But, you know, they do a good enough job, you know, which is a good enough, a good job for us. And I'd like to see if there's something, since we, you know, in a sense, shorter than money they were used to, not shorter than money they had coming, but what they were used to because they had more overtime.
They used to each get forty-two hours a week. Forty-two and a half.
Forty-two and a half. So are they getting the work done in forty hours?
Oh, I think so.
I don't know, they haven't started doing it yet.
I think they will.
I think they will.
So how, how did that ever get started?
That's a good question. That's way before my, that's probably before any of our time.
What the thought process was to give somebody automatically overtime.
Great question.
Just doesn't, sometimes if you know that backstory, then you can.
That was probably before you too, wasn't it, Madam Auditor?
Well, obviously it's.
Yeah.
Did Dave happen to know, or remember when that happened?
I never asked him about that, yeah.
It was before him.
Yeah.
I am. So I think that's probably clear back of Floyd and Tom.
Probably.
And I have no problem with overtime if you're needing to.
Well, if it's something that's gotta be done, yeah.
Right.
Right.
But just for automatic purposes, that's kinda, just give them the pay raise to get them where they want them then. Why, why would you do that? I don't make sense to me.
It makes no sense.
I mean, it.
I thought we were gonna alternate the times that they started and ended.
Yeah.
Right, right?
Right.
And so, since we do that, can't we just set the hour so it comes to forty?
Right.
That's what we're, right?
Yeah, that's what we gotta figure out.
Yes.
Okay.
You can.
Their deal, I'm guessing, is why is my paycheck shorter? That's what they're trying to attack.
No, I don't know that, I, he was just looking at, cause I told him, we don't wanna pay any overtime, right?
And he thought, he thought it was a pay period's worth of hours, as long as you didn't go over eighty, but it's over forty.
So it was not a mistake on his behalf. And I just misunderstood that he was figuring that out. I should've listened to him a little closer.
So if you were due forty-two hours this week, thirty-eight hours, the next week you get paid two hours for overtime.
Right.
Okay.
So what you were trying to accomplish to make it appear that they weren't losing cash would be that they get paid for forty hours, but they are able to leave early on a Friday.
Yeah, I think if, we were talking about these mornings that they'd come in early, if they, if they use them mornings to come in and alternate, instead of alternating it all the time, just had one afternoon that they could take off early. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, cause you're technically getting paid, you're on the clock, but you're not working, so that is.
No.
Well, isn't that what they thought they were doing though? Leaving early?
No, I mean.
We were alternating.
They knew the one week was a forty-two and a half hour per week. They knew the next week was whatever, thirty-seven and a half hours or whatever it was.
Yeah.
No, they, they knew that.
Instead of coming in early, they just wanted to switch that around. But they thought, they didn't think they were going over forty because they thought that the pay period was eighty hours.
Right.
Instead of.
Yeah, as long as you didn't go over eighty, I mean, yeah.
So they were thinking, because they get paid every other week, that that's how it functioned, but that ain't how it functioned.
This is another question.
Is it?
So they, like, write down when they come in, and they write down when they go home. And they get an hour break in the middle, and that's taken out of there. So when they're writing that down, does it equal forty every single week, no matter what?
It equals forty-two and a half every single week.
Right now.
Right now.
Right now. But if you want them to only work forty, you need to come up with a schedule, like Craig said, if you're alternating, if you're.
Let's come up with a schedule.
Yeah.
And let's say one week Pam comes in at, what's their normal time, seven-thirty?
Um, seven.
Seven, I think, or a door I can usually get in if I come in early.
Okay, they come in at seven, and what time do they both, they both come in seven, right on the door?
They'll take an hour lunch at the same time and they both leave at the same.
See, that was the thing, is we wanted to alternate so there was always somebody here, if there was a, something gets broke or.
Right.
We wanted to alternate where there, you know, the lunch was the biggest thing, I think, do we need to alternate?
I agree. It just makes no sense, you know, when you go someplace and there's a sign on the door that says, we're closed for the lunch hour, and you only get a lunch hour to get your errands done, and the place you need to go to, I'm like.
Right.
Why do we all have to go together? And it's just a habit that gets kinda started, cause CDC used to close up during the lunch hour.
Well, they don't have any customers per se, but if there is a customer here that would drop a glass or something.
Yeah.
You need somebody that can clean that up for some, yeah, or throw up, exactly, yeah.
So I mean, you could have someone come in from seven to four with an hour off, someone else come in from eight to five with an hour off.
Somebody from eleven to twelve and somebody from twelve to one.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and that'd be eight hours a day, five days, forty hours a week.
Right.
Yeah, the seven o'clock person can, you know, and you can alternate weeks doing that if you want.
Or months, if it's easier for, you know, cause some people, right, it's hard on your rhythm if you're used to going, and then the next week you gotta go early, then you gotta go to bed early that night before and, you know.
Is there anybody here past really after four-thirty?
No, anybody besides.
I mean, I mean, the doors are, I mean.
Not, not.
I'm just saying, I don't know what you're saying, anybody, I don't know if you're talking about them. But yeah, I mean, the treasurer's office, sometimes there, a couple of them might be here after four-thirty, but their door's closed.
Right, and there's not like, you're gonna create a mess.
We could do a seven to four, or seven-thirty to four-thirty.
Right.
Right.
Place open and they'd be here, they'd be here to open it, and somebody'd be here to lock it up.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, is that what they do now? Is they, they lock the front door? Who locks the front door in the courthouse?
They do.
It's just, they turn it on so when you walk out, it automatically locks.
They unlock it, they lock it, unless we're having an election and then we lock it when we leave.
That'd be what I would say, and it's stagger the lunch, it's just a, and I could choose who wants to come to lunch, I don't.
Right, exactly.
I could play rock, paper, scissors, draw a circle.
If they wanna switch week to week.
I know their drama's gonna be, like, when they go and clean the annex, they usually go do that together. Why, I don't know, why, again, I don't know why.
They could do that at seven-thirty.
If they had to move furniture or something to clean, I mean, I could see having to do them there so somebody didn't pull their back and cost us.
Make sure an hour for dinner.
An employee for.
Or an hour off, they, if they wanna take thirty minutes of the lunch hour, fifteen minutes in the morning, fifteen minutes.
What'd you say, seven to four?
Seven-thirty to four.
Just not paying you for an hour a day. Then there, then you'd have somebody, they'd have a half hour of the lunch period though, that there wouldn't be anybody here.
And then an hour break.
Not if it just went from eleven to twelve, twelve to one.
Twelve to one, eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, twelve-thirty to one-thirty.
Right.
It's like a long lunch, right?
Okay.
Everybody gets.
Yeah, I mean, that works. Are you scribbling that down?
I scribbled it down. Grab a mic and check your emails and fill my groceries and bring them and let the dog out.
I mean, other than when weather's inclement, you know, and snow, I mean, for a late, a late afternoon mop or a, mop the steps or something from, but the, I mean, if there's somebody coming in at seven in the morning. The thing is, you'd like them steps to be dry when people start climbing them in the morning, so if you did a mopping at evening, that's why the eight to five didn't sound too bad to me. You know, create the habit of seven-four, eight-five.
I didn't think we were either way.
Yeah, anything works, I'm just throwing out why I thought that.
Those are examples of how it could work, it's not written in concrete at this point in time.
You're right, in concrete, there are employees, I guess, I'm just looking at those, yeah. I also wanna keep them somewhere happy.
Yeah, that's exactly.
You do a good job.
Yeah, they're good staff.
Yeah, we don't wanna dictate my branding.
I was also wondering if we could get, you know.
But they're your employee and that's your job, right?
I get it. We're so used to not.
I know, not being able to.
They don't work.
Well, Kyle, you wanna, did you jot those things down possibly, or Terry?
Terry just.
Seven to four, seven-thirty to four-thirty.
And then maybe.
Is that what you said?
That's what I like, you know.
Make sure we get the staggered lunch hours in there.
Yep, staggered lunch hour.
Stagger the lunch hour.
Unless snow removal is necessary before office hours or before.
Yeah, we always get somebody in the building. I remember that was one of our main concerns originally.
We should.
Right. And on those days, they, you know, they can come in, they probably should come in together to accomplish snow removal.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Well, just expedite it.
Make sure you write into other jobs as a son.
Okay.
I mean, and all that means is one person could have more overtime than someone else because of miles.
You just wanna keep it that part even, if someone, if there's overtime to be had, it needs to be dippy-dubbing.
Well, if one's start time is seven and one's start time is seven-thirty, we have a big snowstorm, so they both come in at six.
Right.
So one has an hour of overtime and one has an hour and a half, or an hour and a half of overtime. But if they, if they rotate those schedules.
Right, I mean, it's not.
It could play out the next month.
And, right, I mean, it's just not exactly gonna be the case every, by words, exactly equal. Right, and then you need to, right, and you're, I agree. I think they're both adults and they could come to them terms and, hey, you guys kinda, this is what we proposed, you guys make it work on yourselves. And these are things we suggest that maybe you rotate monthly or bi-weekly or however, whatever's convenient for you, yes. Or just be.
Anything add?
Or just be happy with the.
Do you think you're content with all that?
I'm kinda leaning more towards the seven, seven-thirty starts and eight to five, just because.
Right, cause no one's here then anyway, and if it would be necessary to stay and take care of something.
So you like.
Whoever happens to be here will do that, since one would be gone at four.
Seven and seven-thirty?
Right.
I mean.
So basically what I wrote down, seven-four, seven-thirty, four-thirty.
Pay less, if you got more.
And then alternate lunch hours. Okay.
Got it.
Put that back in the folder, it was in the folder.
Yeah, thank you.
I scribbled it down in green, probably what you did already too. Alrighty, uh, I'll let somebody go who had a big meeting, anybody?
Not big, but I can.
Okay, go ahead.
I had reading twelve last week, and it was pretty just standard, going through budgets, expenses, reports, um, an executive report. A few things, we had some, a couple delinquents on some of our loan funds, but some of it was change of banks, nothing they were concerned about. We have our meet-in poultry loan fund still out there, we haven't awarded anything yet to, but that's a pretty big deal, that's, yep, fifteen million. We did approve a hundred thousand to chirp coffee out of Jefferson. They had kind of a hiccup in, had all the, everything basically in line to go, and then something with the paperwork fell through for the USDA part of it. So we ended up doing an additional hundred thousand through Region Twelve, and it was advice to do so, and they're already up and going in business. Sounds like quite a little coffee shop.
Is that a grant or a?
Loan, well, part of the revolving loan fund. Housing, they continue to work on.
And, and does that revolving loan fund go strictly to businesses?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so a lot of times, you know, business I can't get fully funded early through a bank will go to Region Twelve, Region Twelve works it out with the bank to cover the difference or to get enough to get them up and off, off the ground and going. And then they have a committee that tells us basically, yes, we approve this, or no, we don't, actually, I'll show you, Craig, here he is, a packet, this is just for chirp coffee. This is all the information as far as loan and what collateral, who the people are behind the business, and they get pretty deep into it. When you want to get, the idea is to get the money out there so the companies, you know, can get up and going, economic developments for that. So it is higher risk, but yet, if you don't award them, it's not out there doing what it's supposed to either, so you try to go walk that fine line of helping the businesses that look like they can succeed.
Got a shot.
Got a shot at it.
There's a higher risk, the banks don't wanna necessarily jump into it, which are more than I mean. And they have some difficulty with them, but not, not as bad as you'd think.
Don Rick said he went with that chirp coffee, they were hauling in like thirteen thousand.
No one's.
A legend, like thirteen thousand.
I was waiting for a statement.
Oh, yeah, you know, I mean, I'm sure they have a few other little things, but, you know, kinda like a scooters coffee down there.
That must pay good.
But they employ how many people?
Wow, I mean, it says they created one full-time drivers' horse and seventeen park type jobs, that's incredible.
So it's kinda nice to be able to use those funds for that, exactly that, get them up and going.
Well, if you find somebody that's interested, we've already got a Crawford County meat starter, but we never ever found a, a good meat cutter.
Yeah.
Wanted to actually run, we just wanted to help get one started in the town.
Yeah.
Because while we're still short meat cutters, you know, I mean, how we used to have in Irwin, you used to have in Mapleton, I mean, we used to have them everywhere, and now we have them nowhere.
Well, there is a huge fund sitting there waiting for, we did have one that didn't quite, it had to go back to the drawing board, they. Like, I wanted to get some funds out of that, and it didn't get approved yet, just cause of, all the Ts and I, weren't great, crossed, and I stopped it, so.
And how many dollars is that fund in this?
Meat and poultry.
How much is twelve?
Meat and poultry fund is like fifteen million, and we have, we'll cover a bigger area outside of our region, just to help with development. We also got, we did our transit report, if you wanna look over those numbers, kinda interesting, tells you your miles.
It's a lot shorter than it used to be when the new guy has.
Yeah.
A little bit.
There's some different funds coming available, Chris waited to talk about the HRPP administration, there's ten million in that for, it's a pilot repair program. People can come, I can't quite fix up their homes in rural areas or in our, you know, our areas, and it's up to twenty-five thousand in home repairs that they can get help with.
Twenty-four-nine ninety-nine.
So, they, uh, they said they're gonna be moving forward with that, they said the challenge is gonna be, it's an online signup. So they're probably gonna have to do a lot of the legwork, they were thinking, ask people come to them, cause you need to get lower income type people that maybe they don't have a peer or access to one, or the know-how to sign up. So they're kinda getting their stuff in order to be able to administer this, interesting. And then just have a list of the expenses we went through here, I said, some of the housing stuff, the spec house in Coon Rapids, had the concrete poured and dirt worked on, moved the board on a lot of those. They're gonna become a fiscal agent for Homes for Iowa, that's another admin type service they're gonna provide, I said, right in the wheelhouse, it can cover and do it. Otherwise, that's the packet you guys can look through. Uh, the other thing, Kyle, I didn't forward you a response back from Lucas, did you see that? About our all-system permit that was signed into law.
And she did sign it.
She did sign it. Did you read what he said?
Yeah, it's actually, it's like they signed it into law and now they're kinda revising it, but we can still opt out, but we'd have to show reasoning why we wanted to opt. All farm-to-market roads cannot be opted out.
Right.
So they are, go ahead.
Hey, here's what, I'll just read what Lucas said quick, so Senate Ball five-twenty-seven was signed by governor, the bill's getting more eth legislative than ten of original legislation that makes it opt out instead of opt in. The bill makes changes all system permit by allowing all paved streets and highways except prohibited by local jurisdictions. Paved, now here's the, here's the kicker, that takes the control away from us. Paved, farm-to-market and truck route roads cannot be excluded from local jurisdiction, so basically they're saying the farm-to-market roads, unless. If a local jurisdiction excludes a road from all system, it must provide justification to the DOD.
We don't want them to destroy our roads, isn't the deal justification?
We care about the longevity of our roads.
Well, that, we want it to last more than five years, will that suffice?
So they really didn't make it an all opt out to me, because they're still gonna tell us what roads they're gonna go on, or they just.
But you can't opt out on, let's say, they want it and we don't, can't we opt out on that?
Not as far from the market.
Kind of the federal fund.
And did the, maybe Paul will be able to figure out something cute to write up, each country mark.
Did the federal government also grant ninety-six thousand dollar, or ninety-six thousand pounds for seven axle trailers on interstate roads?
Oh, hell no.
No, no, that's.
They won't do that. Because I thought I read that in my Iowa Councilman's Association magazine last month that I got.
Okay, I didn't see that, I know there was talk about it, you've even talked about that, where some in the federal government wanted to increase that, but I, I haven't heard about it.
There's a lot of pushback on that, the, across, I, I think, I think you're, who you're gonna have is your biggest opponent of the interstate highway in particular, our US highways. Being mandated where they can go up to eighty-five, five or eighty-six for a spread, and ninety thousand for a triple axle, I think where, the railroad's gonna be a big pushback. And then the big fleet, but ATA would probably go against it because the big fleets don't, think about how many trailers they own.
Right.
Uh, Hirschbach just recently bought out, uh, John Critterner, and they're a thousand trucks, and that's their little toy fleet, thousand trucks. Well, you think about that, just about every time you got a truck, you got two trailers, you know, a lot of these big fleets, cause they're gonna drop trailer setup, but I mean, at least be one and a half times. So you think about trying to, that'd be a thousand and fifty trailers for that, just, I mean, you got Swift that probably owns fifty thousand or a hundred thousand trailers. They don't wanna have to replace all them trailers with triple axles or something to compete with us small people that can now do that, you see what I'm getting at?
Wouldn't it be a good business plan for them to start up days with triples?
Yeah, you would think so.
Cause if you could get, in theory, twelve percent less employees.
They just, they think about losing one customer for one load, and that's too much for them, and they want it all. And that's, that's, the railroad, when we, when we did the thing in Iowa where we went for livestock, only at first. And the railroad says, if you do, if you incorporate grain trailers, we're against it, because they were afraid we'd pull.
They'll all pull them out.
Yep, so that was their big, that was their big sticker, and I, I'm, so I, I assume those are the things that are going on behind the scenes that are making this hard to do. To me, the interstate highways in particular, you know, aren't, aren't a big problem, you know, Kansas has been running them triple, they're like free, free trailer setups.
South Dakota's running them.
Yeah, forever.
Yeah.
You know, and thing is.
But they got the axles.
But there you go, Kyle, just like I've said in this room a million times, if you got the tires on the ground and you aren't increasing the grounds per, pounds per square inch, why does it matter?
Exactly.
You know, if you can ship more freight, I mean, it gives the truck, the trucking companies an ability to basically make our products cheaper, because they can haul more. Spending less, and they can still get paid more, but just not more, so much more that it's making products go up. I mean, it's, it's, it's a no-brainer in my mind, but you'll have people button up against it for those reasons.
With all the extra axles, I'm sure they got extra braking capacity.
And, you know, and then, hell, the tire makers are probably all for, cause there's gonna be more tires on the ground, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's great.
That was one of our constituents that posed a question yesterday, and I'm, I'm pretty sure she signed it, but I'm gonna have to find out, he was very disappointed that she would have signed that.
Craig, I don't.
But I'm sure he'll take that advantage rather.
Oh, yeah, everybody will. I'm just against them not having enough tires on the ground, I've never seen that before.
Another note, today, Paul will be coming up, I was gonna ask him, I think today was the deadline for our bids for the milk shop. Curious how many, he had good interest in that or not?
Yeah.
I'll be very honest, I also know we go to North City.
Right, right.
I wanted to call me and he took it back out, cause he just had the same problem we're having with the city center, was not being able to get.
People lined up.
The subs lined up, that's enough, so if you got a business that can handle all that, or don't have that in your, your house already. Kinda running into the same problems, you know?
Makes sense to do.
See, and I, I had to also talk, I'm going to the city center, I have to jump all over, but talked to a few different people in construction, and they said, the problem isn't so much with the deadline. Or the work, it's piecemealing it out, having Jake's RFP to do that. Or they, well, I'm saying, if I'm gonna do the job, I'd rather be able to do the whole thing at one shot.
Where were they, where were they last December when we had it all at one time?
I know it, I know it, and they did, so.
Yeah.
It's, it's unbelievable, because the job is not big enough for the big companies to come in, it's really not, you know? And the longer we wait, the bigger it's getting, because the windows are in dire need of somebody to come in and scrape that paint and paint them again, the longer it sets empty. The wall, you know, when I, when I had a concrete company come and kinda look, the wall is, is, it's bowing, you know, and nobody's taking care of it, the concrete's just getting worse. And we just can't, you know, they, you know, the concrete people know, you know, what that would be, they could do that all by themselves. The painting people can go through and say, this is what it's gonna be, but to get that person that's gonna hold it all together, and then, once we break out that electrical. We could possibly get Region Twelve to come back and be the facilitator, but remember, they didn't feel qualified to facilitate the, that intense need for the electrical that the IT department is, is saying they needed. So that's the reason that I thought that was gonna be the way to go, so we'll see what Jake has to say about when it found out.
Yeah, that's where, see what Jake says and do that, but I'm, I'm still almost in the camp. We just got emails from Terry updating us with where our article funds are at.
Yeah.
It's almost like we could use what we think we have there for that, here you go, public health, here is your.
Going into the same thing though.
Well, I know, but it should be up to them to.
Repose that question to ours.
Yeah, I think we have a point.
Well, we did though, we did though.
Just throw a number at whether it's hundred, here's a hundred fifty thousand, yeah. Bring us your receipts or bills as they come in, as you do what you can, like you said.
They'll have to still have that, uh, they have to bid it out, they're to the same procurement policy that we would be.
Yeah, I don't think that they're gonna be any better shape, but in fact, Lynn wanted to do a, that big outfit, that outfit out of Ames or something, which was gonna eat up a lot of the money right away.
Well, but, but the only way they would even look at it is because he said it was gonna be a million to a million and a half dollar project.
That's Public Health Board after.
That's the only reason that they would, you know, we were putting that out there as a million dollar job, maybe people would, you know, perk up at, uh, for a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and you've gotta get somebody to paint, you've got all these different parts, and it's not worth it. It's just not, not big enough, that's, that's kind of the problem, we're not re-confining the whole building, it's just basically busy work, you know, painting. You know, because it all adds up to all that our procurement policy, we have to go through the whole bid process.
Do you have a feeling with the Public Health Board that there is any urgency on their behalf to get into it?
Doesn't appear to be, but it's kinda like what cake versus chicken or the egg, they can't move over there without the internet and all the things that Jake has to do. So I really feel like we need to get that part done, because they, and here, somebody brought it to me, and it's not my turn yet, but I'll, I'll kinda. They don't understand why we're making that be the safe house, if, if there was a tornado in Crawford County slash Denison. You know, he's putting all of his IT stuff over there for sake, keeping in case of a catastrophe here at the courthouse. We're, it's in the same path, if you're really gonna do that, it should be in Minella or it's like, you know, someplace other than right in the same path, cause if that building gets taken away, this, you know.
I already thought that was what we talked about once upon a time in that meeting.
Yeah, so we're the one who are putting all this money into that building when it's basically in the same, same pathway, and I know, you know, where I used to work, one was in Idaroe, and the other one was in Denison. We were far away so that you still had all of your things in a completely different location, rather than just down the road. And there's a, a lot of, you know, we'll see what he finds out, you know, we'll kind of go from there, but once we have his, what he found out, we'll have better guidance for how to go forward. It's just unfortunate that right at this exact moment, we can't have somebody working on the concrete, we can't have somebody. It's just unfortunate that, right at this exact moment, we can't have somebody working on the concrete, we can't have somebody scraping and painting, we can't have somebody in there. We could get, we could get it done if we just could tell these people, you know, this is what must be done. And I don't think we need to move any of the, um, uh, sinks anymore, just leave those where they're at. Get somebody in there to deep clean the carpets, get somebody, you know, but what comes first, changing that doorway? Put the, you know, we're not gonna put a doorway or a wall or those, we're just gonna put gates there, um. As long as I'm talking, we'll talk in a bit. Uh, I did talk to Paul, uh, from H R one source, and he does not, uh, uh, deal with the elected officials. But he would, uh, it says, uh, whoops, I changed the email, anyway. He doesn't, that, uh, deal with elected officials directly, but he would welcome the opportunity to be at the compensation board meetings. To kind of, uh, I don't know if it's direct them, but just be there so that he could see how they use that process. But I think more than anything, uh, based on, uh, last week, you know, we had a department head slash elected official. Which was all fine and good, you know, wanting to, to compensate an employee again. And once again, we're basically comparing it because across the hall, somebody started out at homework. Uh, and once again, we have no idea what the comparison is to what that person is doing compared to who they're saying is making more than they are. And more than ever, the, the reasoning, the decision making, the supervisor, what education they have, what experience, uh. Has a difference, i- i- if, if every job was created equal, it would be so much easier to discern, determine that value of that job. And right now, the way that it runs in, uh, government is, everybody, everybody should make the same. And if anybody makes more, and we talked about it before, it just keeps going up because that person's making this much and they only have to do this and I do this. So then that one gets, you know, everybody just keeps trying to, to one up everybody else and we have no idea. That job may have a lot more responsibility than the person who's comparing what they make to that job. And, and none of us know, and we're now at a point where we're, uh, in the middle of the year, trying to come up with somebody just got hired. And the person that's been here doesn't make as much, so then we, you know, use some funds in a line item to bring them up. And it's just, and once, you know, unlike, um, some line items, we have some control over taking them back down, wages you don't. Once you give somebody a raise, you, you can't take that back down, so we're, it's just a, an inevitable thing. Where we're eventually just gonna work ourselves out of the market, and if you're constantly comparing what everybody else is making and trying to keep up, it would, we're chasing.
Oh, you, you might, the point you made, yeah, that, I mean, we compared other counties and we don't even know what they do in their county.
That's right, we don't know how many, you know, and the fact that, and I.
I mean, it gives you a source of reference, but it shouldn't be anything in concrete, and we treat it like it is when you're trying to get a raise.
It is, yeah, so, that conversation, you know, kind of just, you know, I keep going back to how he can help us. Untangle some of the weeds, basically.
Yeah, well, we said that when we sat in that meeting that day, Gene.
But he does not directly.
You know, upfront, hearing from Paul, I mean, I agree, it could be something really good as far as. Having some references, some actual facts and data behind what people should be paying. But after digesting last week's conversation, and I think Craig, you kinda said, if we can't do nothing with it anyway, why spend the twenty grand? And my one fear, and I just put it out there, is, let's say with the credits to exemptions and rollbacks and. Everything we have, what, what if we do come in, we were, what, uh, up a hundred thousand this year in growth?
What we kind of looted that we could be three hundred thousand short just on the tax exemptions.
Right, so my point is. If we come in under and have to start dipping into general fund, we can't afford the wage increases anyways. And that would be a huge slap in, I think, our citizens and our employees' face that we spent twenty grand. On something we couldn't implement. But I, I agree, I think it could be something really good, but you can't, it's like the, if you can't do nothing with it.
That's right, I, it'd be the biggest waste of money.
That's a huge fear of mine.
And I, I did bring that sheet, I had it last week, I didn't bring it today, but cost of living increases, I think, started in nineteen seventy eight. Roughly, and so over that time period, the average has been three point five nine percent per year. And some of those years were increases of fourteen, eleven, twelve percent cost of living, so if that's our guideline.
For the county?
No, for nationwide, nationwide. So, if that's our guideline, what's gonna happen on those years where it does go up fourteen percent, are we, you know, we can't. Tie future boards to those decisions, but I mean, would this board go, boy, fourteen percent, I don't know about fourteen percent, we'll, we'll just do seven. So we don't stick or stay with that, cause that, that guideline, cause it's, that's what it's tied to, is the cost of living. There were some zero percent years.
Yeah.
But over that timeframe, it was three point five nine percent, I remember that. So, I guess that's what I just wonder is that, on those big increase years. You know, I would assume we would tie, pull back and say, we're not gonna do that.
I.
So then when we don't do that, now we're not following through with something that we put in place to say, well, this is what we're gonna do to follow through.
And as to me, Craig, where I was, I would rather be at three to four percent year after year after year, we're over a ten or twenty year span. You're right in line with inflation anyways, you don't, you don't get these huge ups and downs, jumps.
But that still doesn't help us decide the value of those jobs. What, you know, it's the constant comparing to what I do compared to what somebody else does and I should make the same or more. That's, that's where, that's the only thing that this, not only, but it would really help us to, you know, help people to understand that. It's just, it's been quite a confusion thing every budget hearing time when we're trying to.
I know what you're saying, Gene, I mean, if you had something that at least gives you a job description, like if you spent half as much to say, alright, we just wanna establish real job descriptions. For each position, interview, find out what they do, and then have that there, so then when it comes time to do the budget, they come in and say, well, Ida County gets paid this. We can say, well, what do they do? Well, they're actually, you know, uh, treasurer's office that's three people short of what you're doing, and them three people are actually doing all that. Now, their population's a lot less, but they're doing more workload, so that's why they're getting paid more. You know, so I, I, you know, to me, if there's things that, okay, you bring in why you should be paid more than. You know, and then you can say, this is what you're actually doing and this is what they're doing, I mean, there's significant difference, that would be the only advantage.
Right, but for us, that's just one person that pled their case.
Yeah.
And then everybody's single A L becoming, including their cases, and we, we need to have it all together at the same time, rather than piecemeal by piecemeal. And then that person did get a raise, but the other thing that we do different than other counties is my understanding is we just give everybody the same, you know, raise. Rather than your person with the compensation board saying, well, I just might as well get five percent for this reason. And mine should only get two because they're new and they, you know, we just, everybody gets the exact same thing, they all get whatever, and that's, I, I know.
I think there's no good answer.
I know.
We, we've been searching and this was a search.
I'll let that go.
I mean, we fight it every, every year.
Right, and then, uh, the, the governor did sign that House file, uh, four seventy one concerning mental health and the way that they do their boards. And I had an opportunity to speak to both, uh, Steve and Jason about that. And it's driven a little bit by the federal government saying, if you don't do this, you won't get some funding also. So it was something that she needed to sign to ensure that we would continue to get the funding that we need. Um, I do have, uh, Colin is away in what?
I said it, the government manipulating.
Right, I was gonna say, yeah, that's, that's maybe a stock answer that you get, but that's, I do believe that's probably the fact. But I do have Colin and he's away, uh, on his conference this week about the twenty eight E agreement, how that's gonna look and what we're gonna do. Um, to, to, uh, to adjust that, because in our twenty eight E agreement with them, it says that we all have a voting, we all get to vote. And at this point in time, we don't, so we need to find out how fast we need to, to start working on the twenty eight E agreement. So that when the new board gets together, they're not needing a list of decisions. So I'm anxious to see how that's gonna look on our new twenty eight E agreement with mental health. So I've got Colin kinda getting in front of that, so that, uh. And then we're also hoping that the advisory board could possibly be made up of, of counties that don't have an actual voting board. Not the best scenario, but a better scenario than, uh, not having any say so in anything at least. You know, we can still attend and we can still voice our opinions, we just don't have the vote, so, that's how I'm gonna stay on that.
Okay, can we get back to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, well, you had your short, I don't have really anything else to add, any big substance, so I can make nothing a last long time. Well, go ahead and Cal, go ahead, Paul's not in here anymore. Here's a company. Come on in here before you drop something.
Has there been a bit dropped off here at all? Okay, so there's one, I know there was three, there's a guy sitting outside waiting, but I'm just gonna go down and tell Kathy. Uh, cause they told me they're gonna bring it up here to the auditor's office yesterday afternoon, and they told them where it was at, but I just wanna make sure we don't miss. So I'll be right back, uh.
No, I was just gonna, Paul, they're on the bridge deck today on the brick payment.
I forgot the picture yesterday.
Not a lot of concrete trucks headed towards that way this morning with the concrete coming out of. I'm guessing it'd be one of the plants here in town.
Okay.
Yeah.
They were, I was, they were already meeting when I came over.
I was up there.
Been busy.
Saturday afternoon and looked at it, it's, it's amazing. The amount of rebar, if you've never been around, I've never had to see one of them, and big rebar in the bridges, so. Had a report today. So, we need, we're getting close.
They pour sides?
One jump. I did text Paul right away this morning, like beautiful day for a bridge deck board. And I can pass this around, he did send me a video of it, so, he was out there.
This morning?
Right, early this morning, so.
I wonder if you got pictures of that, I went up there yesterday and all that rebar's all in there then?
Gotcha.
And it's all in, I mean, it's got an epoxy coating, oh, that's.
For bridge decks, you have to use epoxy coating due to the. Destruct the safety of it and get it sold in there and possibly cause a corrosion, sure, sure, you don't want that steel to corrode.
The sides will do that later. It's already done and embedded in the.
I got lots of videos this morning.
Can you put them up there?
Yeah, can I?
Did you get some pictures of the rebar?
Yeah, well, here, here's a, here, I'll just show you some videos quick.
Did you get pictures?
Here's like a, you know, that's.
Yeah.
That's under this morning.
That's pretty damn cool.
So that's the bridge deck board.
Wow.
That they're working on, and then, uh, here's a, here's one of the. Our guys, that's the bridge crew. So, it's a project, they're working up on V L, yeah, so. So that's kind of a. That's on V L.
Their last night, the guys are still there.
It's really, there's a, they're building a stilling basin, rip rap stilling basin. Yeah, that road's closed. And here's a little, you know, riser that they poured in the end of it.
Oh.
Wow.
So, anytime the bridge crew does something, if it's metal, they weld B C and the ear on it, if it's kind of.
They still put twenty five cents or?
Terry did, they put a hard hat in it, just top showing in Terry, Terry's last name. So that's that, uh, yeah, I kinda made the rounds this morning here, here's the asphalt plant side of it. Okay, hi.
Hi.
Thank you, we just wanna make sure everybody kinda knew where they were going.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a little show and tells this morning, it's an instruction project, yeah, so, uh, there's some more that I'll show you, but if I can get it up there.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to be a Jake thing.
So, uh, we'll go ahead and through this, my stuff here and then we'll. Block here in case of someone else that is gonna submit, so. Anyhow. Just going around here. Jake, I kinda do these videos for a couple of reasons. Give you a one of looking at those videos. Oh, Kyle's. You did have one of those, okay, okay, cause this was laying in my bag.
We doubled it, okay.
Paul, do they have one around here?
Well, they live a long ways away, so that doesn't work very well, but they do like looking at the videos. Anyhow, first thing, yeah, there's a couple of permits at Western Iowa Power is a, uh, uh, just a, an overhead power line there going up on two ninety street. It's a new line and, uh, the other one, it's kind of an interesting deal. Uh, I didn't realize that School Street had been closed for a whole week, they tore up our concrete pavement.
I got you, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll just stop and get blocking, whatever the box next channel, open all the bits up. So anyhow, uh, we got, kinda got it all figured out, but there was a lot of miscommunication, you know, and I talked about how communication is so important. Yeah, they had throw down, they haven't done anything, they've been open, they've been closed for a week, so. No, it was a contractor working for the school, so we have an engineering firm, project management firm, a contractor in the school. And nobody, nobody thought they would. Uh, you know, and our, our road was closed for a week, so, um, so we got that all worked out. So that's the, uh, it's a sanitary sewer connection that they're doing, they're, those kitchen remodeling, so then they have to put a new sanitary sewer and restrapped.
Restrapped.
And, and that sort of thing, so that's what's going on down there, so, uh, not, not a huge issue other than they closed the road. You know, and so, uh, so we got it all worked out. So you'll have to sign these ties. So, the bridge break, yeah, the, the concrete pour is going great this morning, um, they started at six thirty, they're trying to do eighty to eighty yards an hour. It's about a four hundred yard pour, and everything was working great, it's a beautiful morning, and so, uh, uh, it is impressive. Get a chance, if you wanna leave here and go up there, I'm gonna head back out there as soon as we're done here, uh. You know, lots and lots of steel on those bridge decks, and it's just, also had the bridge crew guys come down and so they could see it, and see what goes on when they're on a bigger scale. And hope that they don't decide to jump ship, don't work for them. But, uh, but yeah, it's just kinda neat to see, uh, that, that go on, we don't do all that off.
It is pretty cool.
Yeah.
What would really impress me is all the work underneath of it. Did you get to this point? All the falls working out, that's hundred feet of that bridge hole, a hundred and some yards of concrete though.
Yeah. Basically, that's one point six billion pounds, you know, roughly speaking.
And to be secure with your performance of your employees, that it's gonna work.
Yeah, just twenty two, twenty two guys out there, you know, finishing and stuff, so. So they built, basically built a bridge to hold the bridge, build the bridges. Cure and then they take it back out.
And cut it out.
Yeah.
There's a bunch of posts up there.
Cause they, they must have to cut them high, they know, they would one time.
Yeah, they cut them off. Put the rip rap, and that's one downside of the slab, you got all that falls where you gotta pull out of there after the bridge is done. With a beam deck system, you don't have all that to deal with, but beams.
That was what I meant to ask him yesterday, do they like have a vibrator or something that makes sure there's no air bubbles? That's kinda what I wondered.
It's two foot thick.
Oh, I know, I, I.
So there's, there's a lot of that going on, trying to consolidate it.
It's impressive.
Yeah, it is.
Internal, yeah, internal structure.
Yeah.
Uh, well, we can take some big loads of crap that now. Uh, well, we can take some big loads of crap that now. Not too big.
It'll be a nice project once done, it'll be a nice white bridge, so, yeah, so it's, it's. The, uh, overlay project is kind of, again, it's still on hold, you know, they get done, I think they're just about done at fifty nine. They did scoot over and do some patching for us, just south of Manella yesterday, there was a couple areas there that needed some patching, so I think they were in between mixes, and so. It was a good time for them to go over and do that, we split the cost of that to Shelby County, cause it's on the county line, but that was about forty thousand.
Down the road to Irvin?
Yeah, yeah, there, that intersection is really bad, and there was a big box culvert where we had to get, and then there was another little one. Just some kinda routine maintenance stuff.
Good.
So. Uh, the shop, we've been letting today, uh, great crew, they're working on D, excuse me, three hundred and ten street there between D and E. Um, I didn't get to show you that video, but I was disappointed, cause all the equipment was parked, cause they were putting culverts in. So you guys are supposed to be pushing dirt this morning, so I can get, capture everything. But all they really have left to do there is put the culverts in and put all the topsoil back on, so it's, uh, another nice project, and that'll be the fourth one.
Already.
Already, so, yeah.
And you're doing good.
And the bridge crew on that culvert project, they just showed you, they have nine working days on that. And, you know, we talked to them about the ten hour days, and they've got a plan differently now, you know, instead of planning for a six hour day, they got a plan to have full work for a. So, but they all seem to like it.
But I've not heard a complaint, in fact.
I neither have you.
I've got, thank you, I'm sure you have too.
Yeah, so it's, it's working out. Um, so that's where the, the bridge crew's at, and then when we get done there, there's maintenance work, we gotta do a culvert, structural plate up by Donovan Sonics, since where the water's actually going underneath of it. And Donovan reported that, so you really appreciate that, you know, they, people called in and they said, well, I don't wanna buy this, I said, no, it's a quarter hundred miles of road. Okay, if you see problems, you know, that's, that's good, uh, let us know, so the water's actually going underneath of that culvert, so we're just gonna take the whole thing back out, it doesn't have head walls on it. So we're gonna put head walls on it and put it in, so we'll be going there next.
About west of Donovan's house?
Yeah, about three quarters of a mile west of his house. We're trying to hold off on taking some of these bridges that we gotta take out until we get the gravel haul kinda out of the area, it's been a little bit of a problem up there, because you got the highway one forty one bridge, you got our bridge, you got B avenue now. Uh, but it's going good, we gotta, we're up to sixteen trucks now, and, uh, so that's, that's good, we should be done up there next week, and then we'll move right over to Stratford. We're hauling, and there's a lot of haulers telling us that they're gonna come as soon as they get done, I think what happened is you had Sac County Hall and Pot County Hall and asphalt job going on, all these truckers are busy, and as soon as a lot of that stuff, some of that stuff starts to drop off, they'll come and join in. In our haul, so when we start out at the Stratford, up there between Lakeview and Sac City, and we could use twenty five trucks, cause it's just a long haul.
Yeah.
So. So that's going well, uh, we're getting, we're getting more trucks, and like I said, I think we're sixteen, seventeen now. Uh, Martin Marietta, the quarry tour, um, I, I shot them a couple of days, and I have her back for a minute, so.
Cool.
See what that's at, so. Just about there, I've got nine fifty nine, so I'm gonna open these in order that we received them. So.
So you give Troy a clipboard, that's kinda dangerous, isn't it?
Well, it's better than a child a place sign, so. So, I told him, I said, I took pictures of all the guys this morning, I know they, sometimes they're a little like, you know, but five years from now, ten years from now, they'll look back and they'll like those pictures, cause I, I, I've done this throughout the years, you take pictures and you just shoot them off to the guys, or you keep a book of them, and. You know, show your family what you're doing out there, so. Well. Should we start?
Yep.
I'm all in, let's do it.
The first one, we've got four bids, we've got, uh, Baton Valley Builders, uh, Jared Moberg, Jensen Builders, uh, we've got Line and Construction and Septagon Construction. So we have four bids, and this is over the Manella Maintenance Shop that we're planning on building down in Manella, so. Okay. So the first one, uh, from Baton Builders, this is for four hundred and forty nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. And they've submitted a cashier's check for their, um, bid bond, and the reason we do bid bonds is, i- if you happen to get a bidder who, for some reason, is low. And decides that they maybe don't wanna enter into a contract, because they feel like they're too low with the bid bonds to kinda. Cover your loss, cover that, so. So it comes in the form, it comes in the form of a cashier's check, a, a bond, an actual bond, which is what we've got here from Jensen Builders now, I'm working that one, and so, um. So this is an actual bid bond here.
It's Jensen.
Uh, they're out of Fort Dodge, so, and they built the, uh, the voyeur shop a number of years ago, so.
On the voyeur?
Hmm, yeah, yeah, nice shop. Okay.
Who built our Sluswick shop?
Line and Construction. Okay, so this is Jensen Builders, and their bid is eight hundred and twenty five thousand, and no dollars, eight, eight twenty five, zero, zero, zero. Next one is, uh, Line and Construction. They're out of Harvard. Okay, so they've, uh, provided the cashier's check, and their bid is three hundred and ninety four thousand, nine hundred and thirty six dollars, three ninety four, nine thirty six. And the next one here is Septagon Construction. For the.
The line.
More area.
What do you mind?
Yeah. Okay, and so. And their bid is for five hundred and ninety four thousand, nine hundred. Five ninety four, nine hundred. So. It's a lump sum bid, so there's not a whole lot to check here. Our low bidder is Line and Construction.
Also, it doesn't, just a lump sum, there's no de, no detail to it.
Nope, that's, that's what we've done in the past, so, um. So anyhow, it will be, we appreciate everyone submitting the bids, and we'll be here to catch up with you guys on the project, so, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep, thank you very much, appreciate it. Crawford, we appreciate it.
Okay. The bidders?
Yeah, yeah. I might have spelled.
Yeah, we can send you a bid summary if you want, I think you, so if you want that.
Thank you guys. Yep. Jared.
That's Jared, working base of them.
Right, it was me, Line and do the Delsey's shop as well?
Yes, yeah.
Was he in there?
No, that was Jensen Builders, they played it here, I think that's Scott's mother, maybe, I'm not sure, but anyhow, uh, yeah, they did, it's the Line instant two, they did the Delsey's shop. And the, uh.
I'm guessing they, that's probably a good job, but if they, that'd be my guess, or a bit of that nature.
That, that's exactly what happens.
They would have.
Yeah.
The blindest, correct?
Yep. Yep.
They're busy in Delsey's.
Now, you know, I, I, my, my expectations were something between three fifty and four hundred.
Yeah, and I remember you saying the very four hundred.
You know, so. So this is kinda, you know, you got a good sampling of bids here, and, uh, you know, and so. So I'm happy with it, you know, things have gone out, that building cost was two seventy five last week, back in twenty sixteen.
It was twenty sixteen?
Yeah.
Oh, they've done two pours before, so they know.
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they, they, they know what they're doing.
It's not like they, they forgot something.
Yeah, so it's gonna be the same size as the Sluswick shop.
Be exactly like that, except for one thing, it's gonna have, well, two things, we have two more outlets on the outside, and another service door on the, on the other side, so you could come into it. You know, the guy said, boy, it'd be nice to have a service door on the west side of that, instead of just on the east side, so we're putting two on this one, other, other than that, they're the same, identical buildings. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm happy.
Alright.
Cool.
So. Yeah, if you wanna do a video show and tell, just let me know, I got a lot of pictures.
I would love it, cause I don't get out very often.
We can get that. Bring them all, probably from Zoom and all that tied together.
Yeah, cause I took a lot of pictures this morning.
Send me some of them, would you?
I think it's pretty easy, cause I can do it from my phone, my television at home.
Show the folks what's going on.
Yeah, you know, here's the, 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 uh. Shred Brothers, I had a hard time getting them to stand together. Why is it doing that? But, uh, there we go. There we go, yeah.
It would be great.
That's, uh, Noel and David, the brothers, they're both working towards both.
And they, oh, that is great, right, I'd love to see the whole thing.
Yeah.
Should pass us around.
Yeah, there's, they, anyhow.
Yeah.
I'm gonna try to schedule a, a, a safety slash lunch in, in August sometime, you know, bid some of those.
Yep.
We'll do it out at the park, and they will try to have the outdoors, kinda nice to have it at the outdoor one, if the weather, like today, it'd be beautiful, you know, but we'll kinda reserve both of them. Uh, let the weather play out, it's nice, we'll have it outside.
When will that be?
Sometime in August.
Noel and smile, and David's not, I wonder what's going on.
He's a former there. Nothing to smile about?
Yeah.
Got way too much stress now.
Yeah, but Troy says, well, now, don't show that picture to my brother, that's the first thing I do. Okay, well, that's good, good, uh, good bidding letting, I think they're in the shops, I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Get, uh, get in touch with them, I'll find out what we're gonna do, as far as schedule, so. Have a good day, it's Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Appreciate it. Like I said, I'm gonna be up there probably. How long?
Off to the bridge.
But you don't even have to wait for me, just grab a hard hat, you know, from somebody, maybe she'll go by the shop, and you should have a hard hat down there, if you're gonna go out, you have to have a hard hat, you can walk around.
Oh, I was wrong yesterday. I didn't have one on yesterday.
Oh, what else?
So he had one yesterday, I was on my bike.
Okay. Big ones in the shovel also. Well, hopefully by the time we get there, they're doing eighty yards an hour, five yards or seven, they should be done with the concrete by noon, so we show up after noon, and they're kind of a trial.
Hey, I've seen you operate one before too, so you just get busy.
I was on a bridge deck, still in Cedar Rapids, it's like just short of seven hundred yards.
Okay.
Alright.
We have five minutes before mowing, I guess we don't really have clock anymore.
Yep, yeah, we can just move in then.
Did you guys have anything that needed pressing?
I've covered about everything I had.
She's here, so let's, yep.
Okay.
Tayah.
Tayah, if you'd like to come up here and. You're the next contestant.
How are you guys all performing?
Good.
Lots good. So I have just a little handout here, cause I have a fabulous marketing lady that loves to prep things for me. Oh, yes. Way better than when I can come with paper. I can talk all day long, but putting it on paper, not quite that pretty, but, um, my name's Damon Ami, I'm the director of the recovery center in Manning, one of the nurse practitioners that works over there. Um, over the last couple of years, we've done a lot of services, trying to expand what we do, offering more to our communities, we serve a lot of counties here in Iowa, obviously Crawford County. Um, we're just over the Crawford County border, border in Zakerow County, um, but we do work a lot in our surrounding counties, so. Recently, Hopey Settlement Bonds, as you guys all know, have been distributed and partially, and, um, I spent some time at the state level and with Dana and some other places at other levels, looking at. What that money could be used for, or what we could benefit for, that, how we benefit our patients, our communities, things like that, so it's kind of my intent today. One, this flyer tells you a little bit about the recovery center, uh, we've been around for forty one years, we just celebrated our fortieth last year, so about forty one years we've been around in different. Facilities, different areas, different provinces, these are most of our current services, um, if you don't know about the recovery center, we have a sixteen bed coed inpatient facility. Where we pretty much have our beds full at all times with a waiting list that ranges from four to six weeks, um, if not more, depending, anywhere from thirty to fifty people. So definitely need in Iowa for residential treatment services, uh, there are other treatment facilities, but we kinda stand out in a couple of different reasons, one, we take Medicare. We're only one of about three facilities in Iowa that take Medicare, um, for people that are disabled above the age sixty five, Medicare insurance type of things. Um, for various reasons, um, the reason we are allowed to do that is we have twenty four seven medical staff, so between myself and the other providers, one of us is covering the recovery center at all times, so it gives us a little hand up in that spot. Uh, we also take Medicaid state funded insurance, there are, to my knowledge, between six and seven facilities in Iowa that still take Medicaid, a lot of them have stopped doing that. For various reasons, but mostly the reimbursement rate in Iowa is very low and hard to sustain carriers with that, so. One of our challenges and battles that we work through, and at this point, we have not limited Medicaid, and are hoping to continue to do that, because. It's just, it's a great service, so I would hate to limit those that we can offer it to. So residential treatment, um, people stay with us for about twenty to thirty five days, they have twenty four seven services, we offer multiple levels in our residential treatment facility. So, um, I can go more in depth if you want, there I can later, but we'll kinda jump on by. Outpatient treatment, um, we offer outpatient treatment to people that still wanna work and work on recovery, so it's mostly in the evenings. After working hours, after kids are done with, you know, practices, sports, all those fun things, we have a couple outpatient options in various levels there, we. Have people drive from New Orleans to Omaha to do our outpatient, because of the. Way it's done, the manner it's done, not that there are not good outpatient programs in lots of places, we just get a lot from different areas in the state, and they take that effort to drive to us two nights a week, if not more. So kind of a thing, we do work with Jackson here in town on outpatient coverage, they do outpatient as well, so we do work with them quite a, quite a bit. Um, detox, we offer lots of detox services, um, I get a lot of referrals from other hospitals that do not wanna detox patients, they don't feel comfortable doing it. I go and educate at a lot of other hospitals about detox processes, um, something that we've worked on for years at Manning to try and. Make it a little bit easier for patients that do come in, whether it's alcohol, heroin, opiates, fentanyl, whatever the option is, we work to do that, lots of medicated assistant treatment. Something that the state has made a little bit easier in the last six months, and so we're working to make sure we stay on top of that education and stuff.
How has the state made it easier?
They just got rid of the class X D E A license, so anybody can prescribe Suboxone now. Um, two years ago, when I took over the recovery center, I got licensed in Suboxone, had to take a class that was like thirty some hours. Don't quote me on the hours, some hours, and apply with the DEA to have an X license, so I could prescribe Suboxone, and they actually just got rid of that. Um, where the justification was come, I didn't read on that, cause I don't know why, but it does allow other practitioners to, especially in remote areas, to use that as a tool for sobriety, no different. Yes, it is just a partial, when you weigh to egg, this is what it is, but yes, um, methadone, Suboxone are kinda words thrown out there, I do not use methadone. For various reasons, but I do use Suboxone under, um, a controlled setting.
That's what they talk about at the recovery conference, so.
They did.
Another one's.
Yoltraxone, the bupropion is in Suboxone, sorry, I used the name brand there, the bupropion, yes. Um, there are lots of options, I have come in, you know, across multiple providers that aren't necessarily comfortable prescribing those, which I understand, it is a lot of education, I do myself to be comfortable. And I do use it, I know in a different form than some other providers do, I'm a very cautious provider, I can't send somebody home with thirty days of Suboxone, knowing they have an addiction, and think they're not gonna abuse it.
Yeah.
So, different views on providers there, but like I said, I'm a very cautious provider, I don't wanna set somebody up for failure, and it's because of the job I do, I see the long term effects, I detox people off those meds as well. Because they've been abusing it, buying it off the street, you can get anything on the street if you want to. So, lots of issues, but that, that's kinda where a big part of our education and prevention comes in, so. When I started at the recovery center, we had a prevention program, but it wasn't as robust as what we needed to be. Um, and with that, I lend my CEO and my, my boss, Michelle, have dealt a lot with my ideas and stuff that I wanna get going, but one of our biggest problems is funding, prevention isn't funded very well, um, there are grants out there, but. Because we're attached to a hospital, we get taken out on a lot of grant opportunities, so it, it gets a little tricky, so I apply for grants all the time, we're taken out. So it, it gets a little tricky, so I apply for grants all the time, we're taken out because, you know, we're attached to a hospital, critical access, there's grants there, there's funding there, well, there is for the hospital. But there's not for the recovery center, so we're kind of in a great area that makes us have to be a little bit more creative for funding. Um, so with prevention, we have DOT evaluations, we work with employers on education in their facilities. Um, my clinical coordinator just set up at St. Anthony's last week with University of Iowa on a, um, council for employers to learn how to watch in their employees, like signs of substance abuse, signs of addiction, maybe, you know, something they're not seeing to help their employees out. We have EAP programs with employers, um, that we will either come to them, or they can come to us, and the employer takes care of it for their employee type of situation. We offer Prime for Life, which is the OWI course that's required by the DOT, um, if you get OWI, so we do offer that. We work with, um, New Opportunities in Carroll, they also offer it, so we make sure we're doing it at different times of the month, so if it doesn't work for somebody up there, they could come to Manning. Different options for people.
So you're not overlapping, whether you're trying to fill in the gaps with each other.
So trying to fill in the gaps, and that's a new partnership that Christie Jenkins, oh, I'm, I'm probably saying that wrong. Christie, I, just her name escaped me, are gonna work on after, um, we've met more recently, I need to. Yeah, of course.
Do we have anything like that in Crawford County at this time, or is it just at St. Anthony's and then at Manning? Do we have anything similar in Crawford that you know?
Sometimes, sometimes, um, Jackson Recovery here in town does offer services. Every once in a while, when I try and send somebody, um, I don't know if it's staffing, or I, I don't a hundred percent know, sometimes I have to send it to Sioux City.
Really?
No, no, you're fine, I love to answer questions. I just can't always answer them for another facility, but we do work with Jackson, I know most of them work with the Sioux City office.
Okay.
And they'll relay messages down here, um, but they do have a fabulous program as well. Um, school prevention is kind of the biggest thing that I felt like isn't done enough. Um, we've gone into schools, so what we, what we started at Manning is, I don't have like a full-time prevention person. There are lots of places that do, there are prevention specialists out there, not enough of them, especially in our remote area. Um, New Opportunities in Carroll, I do talk about them a lot, they are significantly larger, they're servicing this, they do have a prevention specialist, but they don't go to the schools like what we have done, so once again, try not to overlap services, they go into schools and talk about sex education and a couple other options.
So New Opportunities is in Carroll, isn't it, and they work primarily with the schools, so might, or no?
They have a lot of services like we do, they do outpatient treatment as well, but they also have like TDFC programs for immunizations and public not public health, don't know, they have a larger variety of services versus just substance abuse, which is where we focus our time. So they offer other things with the state of Iowa as well. So they, they're much more broad, we are focused mostly in substance abuse, but one of the things I'm trying to increase is our mental health as well, because they tie too much hand in hand.
I agree.
So, prevention is one area that we need to improve. Um, and I would like to, my goal, my short-term goal, is to hire a full-time or part-time prevention specialist. The reality of a part-time one probably will not meet our needs, so I'm hoping to hire a full-time prevention specialist and expand our school programs. So what we offer right now, um, in the last year, we've gone into Manning, Litten, Audubon, and Elkhorn. Um, and we offer different programs, but we meet their needs. So Litten wanted us to come in and talk, they wanted one of my counselors who had addiction past, tell their story, that's what they wanted for every week, so I have two of my counselors that are about nine years sober, and they go in and tell their stories, they're very different. But it gives kind of that hitting home aspect, they're local people, they were raised around here, it does happen here. So, um, they go and tell their stories, Audubon requested that I come in and talk about fentanyl. Um, which is, you know, the big thing that we hear about a lot now, fentanyl and marijuana with the kids, because that's what they felt like was a problem. So I developed a program, and I went and talked to the high schoolers, and I was very impressed how engaged, especially the junior and senior class was. And the questions they had, and you know, what they see on the news compared to what I was talking about was very different, and we ran out of time, both times, so we're gonna go back for another round.
Excellent.
Yes, because the questions, hopefully all good intended, but I'm also, I'm a very blunt person, I'm gonna give them the education they're gonna ask for. I'm sure that is gonna make a parent mad down the line, but I try to do the best education we can based on the evidence we have nowadays, um. Uh, that's, that, those are kind of the biggest things, in Manning, we go in for a couple different things, we've been going into Manning for a few years, obviously, it's right there. Um, they do the stories, we do some drug education, and in Manning, we start into the sixth and seventh grade, so we do younger. Um, statistics show that most kids that start drugs are between nine and ten years old. Which I've definitely seen in my recovery center, when my patients come in and they tell me that they've been addicted to something since they were nine and ten, it is very common.
Just out of, uh, yeah, where would they be getting that?
Just, anyone, I promise you, it is all over the place.
From here, or are they stealing it from the parents?
Oh, no, um, I mean, I
just.
I can tell, almost any town, I could tell you where to go. And there are young kids that are selling it, there are adults that are selling it, I was born and raised in Manning, I know this area very well. It was around when I was in high school, it is still around to this day, and if the kids want it, they're gonna find it, and it's more creative now, the vapes have THC and methadone, um. They can hide them a lot easier, and, and, and then one of the things I educate the kids on is, you know, back in the seventies, when they talked about the marijuana leaves, okay, that was about forty percent THC. Which is higher than the natural marijuana leaf that grows in the ditch if you wanted to, that's about six percent. Nowadays, the sites that I watch online and the stuff that the kids are getting, they advertise that they're eighty to ninety percent THC. So significantly stronger than what people were smoking in the seventies. And so when my patients come in, they're like, oh, Tia, it's just a plant, it, it's not, do you want me to give you the statistics on your, just a plant, because I will, and we will educate on that. And I also get people that are, they're in the fifties or sixties, and come in, and they'll be like, Tia, you know, I smoked marijuana for years, and I can't tolerate it anymore, I can't, I can't handle it. Because it's so much stronger, it's been manufactured and man altered so much from fifty years ago.
One more question.
Yes.
So the, the gummies or anything like that?
Yes.
Making it so that kids are really enticed by it, do you see that?
Oh, yeah, definitely, it's easy, it's easier access, it's, we have mistaken abuse, um, from kids that, you know, don't realize it's THC. Um, I do like to bring up a couple stories of overdoses that aren't too far from your kids that thought it was candy, without the compressed fentanyl as candy. Um, I, we do see overdoses in our area, I have patients come in that, you know, were in a, a higher hospital from an overdose not that long ago, and thought they were using meth, and they were spending all their meth. Or, you know, a drug screener really comes in and they test positive for something that they didn't know they were using, because so many things are mixed into the drugs. So it, it, it is a scary world, but it's nothing new. It's not new, it's just how we educate, I was not educated on drugs when I was in high school, we had the DARE program in sixth grade, I did fail that program. So, you know, we all have our past, um, I got caught drinking during DARE, so we all have our past. And you utilize it to make it stronger, uh, a lot of my patients like to ask me, well, what's your drug background, I, I don't have one, I didn't go through treatment, I didn't have an addiction background. But that's not what led me to this program, you know, my, my own family, I come from a long line of alcoholics, that's what got me into the, what I do. And why I care so much for it, because I've watched what it does to people. So I can relate more to the family side, so we have a good mix of, you know, counselors in my recovery center, some that are sober for years, and some that came in from a different reason. Um, I have a DHS worker that was raised by addicts, so she's never had addiction herself, but that's how she was raised, and knows the abuse and the background to it. Went into DHS because of that, and is now, you know, educating on substance abuse, so. We have a, I, I obviously speak very highly of my staff, but I'm not saying other programs are not too good as well. We've just made a lot of improvements in ours the last two years to try and fit the diverse culture that we have in place. And that the range of addition that we're seeing, um, and stuff like that, and it is high on kids, I get a lot of calls from parents saying, hey, my kid was caught with this, what do we do? And we work with Nu- Nufters Adolescent Program around here for group therapy, we, we will do individual as well, but there's no reason for two programs in the area to be doing group therapy. So that's another area, you know, we, we don't want to all be doing the same exact thing, because our money can be better spent if we work together. Um, and so we're trying to increase our networking and the ability to help each other out in our communities, because we're, you know, Manning, we're right on the corner of four different counties, plus, in the last five years, we've served every ninety-nine, all ninety-nine counties in the state of Iowa. Uh, in our recovery center, at a residential standpoint, in the last five years. And I work a lot with Woodbury County, um, Bolt County, the bigger counties, we get a lot of Mahaska County, we have a ton of patients from Mahaska County, and that's a three-hour drive, and they do it all the time. The sheriffs, first name basis, uh, I've spent way more time with judges, sheriffs, and lawyers than I've ever wanted to in my life in the last two years. But, it is a great thing, it is very stigmatized, people steer away from addiction because the fear, I, I don't know if that's a good word for it, but I definitely know coming out of nursing school, the recovery center was never a place I thought I'd be working, because that was not my cup of tea. And then, learning and educating myself and knowing more about it, I absolutely love what I do, which is why I push so hard for it to be, continue to be funded. And finding creative ways to make that happen. Um, sorry, I'm getting off my tangents here. Very, very passionate about that, but, prevention, like I said, one of my goals is to hire full-time preventers. Get into schools more, and we wanna cover all the schools in all of our surrounding counties, not just the few that we're in. The few that we're in, I stretch my staff thinly to do, they're very busy, as they should be, we are fully staffed, you know, we're, we're full at all times, plus the massive outpatient phases. So I need somebody I can dedicate to that, I wanna be off for any, anything that schools want, that we physically can allow. Um, obviously, there's probably something we might not be able to, I don't know, but we wanna be able to cover everything in the county, so Dennis and his large school district, Charter Oak, all those, all the districts, more than what we do. We have four counties close to us, there's no reason we can't serve all of them, if not more, if they've reached out. Teach detox education within an hour and a half of the hospital, I run to all those places, I have no problem doing it. Because those people need to help, that's the only way we can help each other out, is by educating, and we don't charge for that, the schools don't have the money for it, they, they can't pay for that, so we don't. Um, and whether that's right, wrong, or otherwise, the kids, I think, are the higher priority there.
Do you know, um, I, I don't, like, does, uh, get us in Crawford County school districts, do we have?
I actually do not know, because I can't meet their needs, I have not reached out. Cause I would, I would hate to send somebody some false hope.
Yeah, okay, I just didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, those schools we have started, and actually, they've reached out to us, and that's how it started getting a little bit bigger, is they called me and said, hey, what can you do for us?
So we can find that out.
Yes, and if they don't, or even if they do, we would love to add to it, and increase it, and meet their needs, ranging from for fifth and sixth graders through high school, because they all understand different things. Um, the other thing, like I said, that we are expanding on is we just hired a full-time mental health therapist, um, more and more. I don't have anybody come in that doesn't have mental health associated with her addiction, and vice versa, they go very hand in hand. I know for years, in the medical field, those have been separated, but they both need treated, um, we've had mental health for years in Manning, just on, so that was one of the links that we made this year. Is we hired a full-time mental health therapist who will be up and running July first, she's, we are dedicating her two days a week to the recovery center alone. Because my patients see more in the recovery center where they're getting, plus three days a week outpatient to serve anybody in the community, um, for mental health. She's also a substance abuse counselor, so we can hit both of those aspects, from family and ages twelve and up currently. I am sending her off for training to do younger, but as of right now, she'll see twelve and up, she'll see families, just a more aspect than what we currently have. Um, and we're also hoping to help supplement, as of right now, I can't be in the school district, they, I don't have enough time for their make sure I word this right, I believe it's through the DEA that they get a mental health therapist in-house, they have not had one this past year, they didn't have one, they couldn't get staffed. We couldn't meet their needs when they requested us at the time, so that was also one of our pushes, is now, we need to meet their needs too. You know, they, they reached out, we gotta figure it out, we gotta do it.
Wasn't, didn't they say at the summit, over fifty percent of substance abuse users had a mental health issue?
Yes, at least, I, I would bet that is extremely higher than that, I would say.
And they use that as escapism for self-medication?
Yes, very much so, yes. Um, yep, it is one of the routes, one of the things we educate on, but self-medicating is a very high form, especially in your schizophrenic patients. Um, bipolar, schizophrenia bipolar, or something I see every day.
I don't assume you work with a lot of the vets, I mean, you just see that with the vets where they'll self-medicate.
So, we do.
They don't like the drugs that the VA will give them, so that's what starts.
Very much so, one of the things is, uh, that we're trying to figure out is how to work with the VA better, so vets that have VA insurance, I have to have approval to treat them.
Yeah.
If they have TRICARE, we, we do take TRICARE, TRICARE is very easy to work with, thankfully, we don't have an issue, but those that just use the VA, we have to have their approval, that's very hard for us to get.
Is it hard to get the care in the community with them? I mean, have you ever tried, like, working with your VSOs, you know, like with Louise, she'd be probably, you know, I mean, I don't know what I know Harlins, or I know Shelby Counties, is, I don't know that there is active in some of these aspects, but gosh, if you give Louise a problem with vets, she's got her nose in there deep as she can.
I do not know that person, my contact is in Council Bluffs, so we could always use another contact, because yes, we do get veterans. It is something we're just starting to actually see more of, um, so I do have a staff member that is going to do some PTSD training that's focused on veterans. That is on our next year's budget list, and so far has been approved.
Yeah, her office is just downstairs before you leave.
Yeah, but yes, the veteran connection is a very hard one, our office, that we have to give approval through is in Council Bluffs.
And I won't say we're gonna be able to make it easier, but we could try.
Try, yes, the veteran community, and that's one that is hard to understand. Vets are hard to understand, that's not a personal thing I have, I don't have any vets that work for me, so finding that connection, um, gets a little bit harder. But yes, it is, it is a need that we can meet on an outpatient basis, we get that covered, but getting residential care covered for them is very hard.
You know, and finding one of them local that's got, we've got a local that's got PS, PTSD problem, I mean, there's a but you know, that's, sometimes it's the best medicine for them, is actually helping others.
Yes, yes, it is, um, peer supports is something we talked about at the summit, we do not have any of those locally, because there's no funding for it. Money runs our world, unfortunately, um, no, nobody pays for peer support. But I do have some volunteer ones, and I do have two volunteer veterans that actually come in and speak in my recovery center once a month. So we have a lot of speakers that come in, two of them are retired vets, that do come in and talk about their struggles and their history and their story, and they're always offered that if somebody comes afterwards and says, hey, Tia, I really need to talk to this person, they do come in.
Excellent.
But I only have two of them, we can always use more supports. So, last thing, I'm sure I'm running my overtime here, but, um, prevention, mental health, and education. So, um, in Manning, I feel like personally, we've struggled keeping a mental health nurse practitioner on staff the last few years. They're hard to come by, psychiatrists, things like that, um, I'm kind of a controlling type of person, and since I can't seem to keep one on staff, I'm doing it myself. So Manning and myself, I am going back to school this year, I started a few months ago to get my education as a mental health nurse practitioner as well. Because we don't have enough in our community, we don't serve them enough, so we need to increase that, and that was one of the ways we went on that, so it was also another budget thing at the hospital, pay for schooling, as anybody knows, is not cheap. Um, and then strong education there, so just trying to, trying to be able to serve our community the best we can, and education is the best way we can do that, so that we can offer all the medications.
Absolutely.
Start young, yeah, yes. Yep, so those are the three initiatives we're making. Dollar figure on that, so obviously, my CFO is my person for that. But the total cost of those three things that we're looking at is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Um, and that includes that specialist, then also, or is that?
The mental health with the prevention.
The mental health.
Yes, ma'am, that includes our full-time mental health therapist, a full-time prevention specialist, and then just for this year, what my education would be to obtain my mental health, um, licenses, all to be able to dual-certify and take care of all these patients, substance, mental health. I also work the ER, I see a ton of mental health and substance abuse in the ER all the time. If I have a patient that comes in the ER for suicide, I expect them to be there for twenty-four hours, because we have to bring in a mental health provider via computer, could take anywhere from three to six hours before they can actually see that patient. And then finding placement for a bed in the state of Iowa isn't pretty, um, it's a process, so it's not uncommon for any hospital. But we do sit with suicide patients in our ERs for twenty-four hours, that's twenty-four hours of care that I could be doing while they're with us, versus not, what waiting for another patient is, so.
Those three hours seem like ten hours.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, I, I, on the provider side, it's awful, let alone the patient side. So, just areas that we've seen that we're gonna try and combat a little bit, but with that comes a price.
Tia, would this cost the, in, or I guess, I should say, with the plan, that would cover all four counties?
Uh-huh, and hopefully, more people would come to us too, as well, but yes, that would get us a prevention specialist in all the school districts and four counties, if they would welcome us.
And then the idea is to reach out to all four counties.
Our, our goal is.
We are just the first of you.
Yep, but yes, our goal is to reach out to all the counties now, the other catch with this, obviously, is the sustainability. That, the, the, the cost isn't gonna go away. Um, the difference is about sixteen thousand dollars less for annual, you know, I apologize. I, my math is apparently terrible right here, it's a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, not fifty-seven. Should've added that, I apologize, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I was off there.
No, we can't afford it.
I apologize, I apologize. But the other thing we're looking at is sustainability, um, you know, the graphs that we were given on opening it, settlement funds, say payouts are for about ten to eighteen years. Depending on the county, depending on the person that's paying it out, or the company, however I word that right. So then looking at if there's an ability to do a commitment for multiple years in a row. Obviously, with Manning, we'll be having to upfront some money as well, but we're hoping to get a little bit of support with our counties around us.
But that'd come out to be about forty-two a year per county.
Oh, that was my, that was my question, yeah.
If they're all willing to, now, this is our first county, um, I am working with two of the board supervisors from Carroll County as well, that I will be they asked for the information today, so I will send that to them afterwards. That I will be, they asked for the information today, so I will send that to them afterwards. Um, if they're not watching, I don't know how that works broadcasting, if they're not looking at it already. Okay, I did send out the invite in times, but I will be talking with them as well.
Is the recovery center a standalone entity?
No.
Or does it, it's in conjunction with the hospitals? It was part of the hospital, Manning Regional Hospital budget?
Yes, yeah, my budget goes into the hospital's budget. So, um, we do have our own budget. So I have my, my breakdown budget. I set my budget, the board approves our budget, things like that. But yes, we are part of the hospital. We work as one. Pot which has multiple benefits and some not benefits when it comes to, you know, we're on a standalone facility, so we can apply for some of the. Grants and funding in the state of Iowa, but it gives me the benefit to take care of sicker patients. I take pregnant women up to the. Up to thirty-six weeks, I can legally take care of them. If they're further than thirty-six weeks, I drag Dr. McClaus into the picture with me. He does have to see him after that point. We intend to deliver people while they're in treatment, but if they need the help, we're gonna, we do our best to make it happen. Um. We do have limitations in critical access, but I take a lot of transplant list patients, a lot of cardiac patients, some elderly that might need a little bit more care, but they still have to be independent. We have the ability to take care of them because I have nurses on staff twenty-four seven and doctors on call twenty-four seven, that a lot of facilities don't have that benefit of being able to do.
Great, it's much, very much like a secondary roads. You know, we have no umbrella of the county and you have a department, so recovery is. The overall hospital.
Yes, we are not county funded. Um, I know that's the thing that I like to make clear to people. We are not a county funded hospital. We don't have county funds. We can't ask for more money from somebody. We're not state funded. Um, you know, we're run by a board and the money that we get from insurance companies, which is a whole nother battle in itself. I could go on for days about Medicaid reimbursement.
Especially when the MCO is not just from what seventy-five to forty-five.
Thirty-seven.
For thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, seven, thirty-seven percent reimbursement from our MCOs, which is not enough to keep our doors open, so. That's the new rate.
It's new one?
That's the new rate. As of current, current, no, yeah, that's, that's the new rate. I think it was fourteen percent prior to that. Don't quote me on that, I have to look, but no, the thirty-seven is our current person reimbursement rate. Um. Our private insurance, like Blue Cross Blue Shield, they pay about seventy-five percent of our costs. So more realistic, more practical. But any questions, I can answer any information.
A thousand, but the guys don't like it when I do that.
Well, my email is on here. Please email me any questions.
I will.
I will loudly answer everything I can and if I don't know, I'm sure somebody in my staff does know.
And my questions will be how you envision it's actually gonna work, you know, how often that person would get over to, to the different counties, you know, how.
I do have that started, so I can easily answer some of those questions.
And you know, some, a lot of times it's about the reporting of how we know that program is actually working and functioning and how many people you see and.
Yep, and that would be part of the expectation of that person and myself. Um, I do have, uh, so a prevention specialist is actually a licensed person in Iowa. There are two tests in the state of Iowa that you have to do that, but they only offer classes once a year.
Oh.
So finding a prevention specialist, I have been having one of my staff work on this for about a year and a half now to get this license, so that. As that being my goal, we've been working towards it already. So.
Just think that's such a huge task for one person.
It is.
Uh, and that's kind of where I, I, your questions come.
And it wouldn't be limited to one person. I have great staff to tell their stories. But they can't do their job full-time and do all of that. Somebody's gotta keep it all together in the same group.
Yep.
And then assign others to say, hey, you're gonna go to London this day or you're gonna go to Carol this day, speak for a half hour. That's a tolerable, that's a doable timeframe.
It needs definitely better.
Yes.
So what is your timeframe that you would hope to implement something like this?
Yeah, I mean, new fiscal year is July one, so. It is not built into our current budget for the prevention specialists, but that can be amended and moved at any point that we are able to see some funding for it. The mental health therapist is hired and she will start July one. The education money for myself has already been started. I started those classes a few months ago. Takes a year to add that to my master's degree that I currently have. So we've started two of the three processes already.
How soon will you be meeting with, like, Shelby, Autumn and Carol?
Don't have that answer. Um, I am taking today's meeting back to Lain Michelle with, uh, the powers above me. And we will make that next plane with our marketing lady who helps keep me in the loop with all that stuff.
It's kind of ties all together.
It does, it does. Um, I'm hoping it is a very quick turnaround. I will be reaching out to Stephen Scott today. To give them the update for Carroll County. I know they've made it very clear that they want New Off and I to make sure we don't overlap services. So Kirsty and I are working on that. I did let Kirsty know what I was intending to talk about already, so they are aware, New Off is aware. But that was Carol's request, is that we didn't overlap and to work with counties. That's perfect. That's what we need to do is serve all the counties around us. Thank you, guys. And like I said, you know how to get ahold of me?
We do.
Yeah.
And I will follow up.
Now, this is Louise.
Louise Galver.
Yeah, Louise Galver, she's downstairs.
Yes.
Down in this corner.
I'm gonna go find her next.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, have a good day.
Fifty-six thousand.
How much, and what are we expecting on the long term, I mean?
I don't know, I need to, I'll look that up for you guys.
I mean, there won't be an ongoing indefinitely.
And that's what she said.
And that much each year for?
Not necessarily. That's what I need to find out. But if we did, I mean.
Well, that's interesting. You know, here's, here's the one thing that kind of bothered me in that. I'll speak my turn here, but is that she's gonna cover her mental health with this and. We've, you know, rolling, just we're basically, she's gonna be able, she's gonna cover where Roland Hills is apparently gonna be dropping the ballers.
Well, that's kind of why I'm gonna take up a conversation with her, uh, with those kind of questions and kind of try to.
I mean, she's obviously, I mean, very passionate and the thing she was talking about was, uh, very necessary. And I'm sad that we don't have that through Roland Hills.
I'll tell you firsthand. That, uh, putting on my MRCH hospital ward hat.
Yep.
The hospital has reached out to Roland Hills and gone many times and asked for funding and, and.
For this, for this.
Right, for substance abuse and covering the gaps that Roland Hills is not covering. And they hear crickets. They get nothing back.
But then here you are, you know, I mean, we're, the supervisors that could go in there and press on that are no longer.
Soon to be.
I mean, that's just, I, I think the state's really dropping the ball.
But you know, the idea of a reason is exactly this. Pull your money together and have everybody in your county being covered. Not Roland Hills, where pull all your money together and it's all going to Sioux City.
And the problem is, right now, our money that the state is giving is still gonna go to Roland Hills. So that, that is as easy as it all sounds, okay, because we don't have our pot of money anymore.
Yeah.
So a lot of questions that arose and a lot of, uh, my mind was going faster than she was talking, so.
And I know I told you guys this before, but whatever decision is made with MRCH, I will abstain.
That makes sense.
I'll fill in some of the blanks that I have.
So she would become under that umbrella though?
So I would abstain.
I got you. Okay.
All right, that was.
All right, next up, let's move on. Credit card limit increased to twenty-five thousand for Hickam's.
Credit limit is twenty-five hundred. I'm just trying to spend down their grant.
They're trying to add a zero. The, uh, oh, yeah, come on. You got, if you're, if you get some info for us, please come up.
She sent me over to tell you guys that the BBS, BBCS, DCI Board has thirteen thousand left in there. Needing to spend that through her. So of the twenty-five thirteen thousand, ECI money. Um, I don't know how much is in my own pocket, but that's, you're right, Jerry, that's what she's trying to do is just spend down her grants for the year end. Can we put like a sixty-day timeframe?
We'll get rid of it as soon as it's paid off. We'll reduce it back down to twenty-five hundred.
And, and, and I would like to make it, I, I do know that we've had some issues in the past with overspending the limit and cost the county money, so.
Not the county. It does not, becomes a personal debt.
It's a personal debt.
It becomes personal. Whoever overspends that credit card will pay it.
Okay.
It is not, yeah, dude.
Yes, I thought we, I thought of.
No, it will not be paid by the county.
I would think she would have her expenditures done by the end of June and so probably in July, statement would pay it off.
Yeah.
Probably forty-five days, somewhere about it.
So have a sunset of.
Forty-five, not?
August first.
Does that work, Madam Auditor? Does that meet your auditing expectations?
I would make a motion to increase the credit card limit for Hickam's to twenty-five thousand until August first. We'll decrease it back to twenty-five hundred. To help with the, the needs they need to spend.
So the motion's been made by Kyle and seconded by Jean Schultz and Hayden, got it? All, uh, any further questions? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Chair votes aye. All right.
What up? No.
The fund transfer.
No, I mean, I will eventually hear because I gotta talk about their, uh, meeting dates.
Okay. I don't know if you want me to bring that up or not.
Bring it up if you want.
So at the end of June, she'll have her fund transfer that will need to be approved again. She needs money from Fund Forty to Fund Department Thirteen to cover. We do it in cash, yeah, there's money in cash, there's some flows of her programs, so.
Okay.
Um, she has about a hundred and fifty-four thousand in there. She said it should be enough to cover it, so.
That's a amount you wanna?
I don't know. She doesn't know the amount yet.
Okay.
Yeah, because there's some funds that may come in on the thirty or something, so.
Well, the meeting will be in the morning, so.
Yeah, I suppose it usually is.
It will.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Thanks, Lynn.
Yeah, thanks Lynn. All right, next on the agenda, is that all we have for that, Madam Auditor? Next on the agenda, uh, city center IT, Jake, you wanna come on up here? City center IT service construction RFP timeline.
So I sent, uh, sent it out last night as far as timer, uh, timeframe. Basically. The end date that I've got put in this RFP is gonna be July seventeenth at this point. Before I get into it, I did reach out to Colin. I never got anything back regarding what happens if you do, don't get a bid for your RFP. What, what action takes place after that? I did hear, I did not go up to this, to Frazier's and ask, but I did hear. That the reason why they had issues was because they couldn't secure an electrician. Okay. So, so that's, that was the reason why we did not submit ones, because they couldn't take care of the electrical part of it. So, um. So I'm wondering if that, I mean, we moved pretty fast on there and that was kind of what the vibe I got from the individual that told me this. Um, it was not from someone directly from Frazier's, but that was, that was what I heard.
So let me ask this in effort to try to keep this project moving.
Sure.
Twice now.
Yep.
The whole thing stops because the electrical seems to be more than a general contractor wants to bid because it's not their expertise. It's not what they do.
Sure.
So I've been, I've been thinking about this a lot. Is there any way we can just have an RFP on electrical? Just electrical and break that out so that. Know what they're doing and electrical is a whole different animal because it's not a large enough project to reach, you know? Can, can we do that?
I don't see why not, okay? I, I'm not. All that familiar with as far as from a legality standpoint, if you can do that, but I don't. Speaking, I mean, you could write an RFP for anything.
That's kind of, because I've, I've searched, because that's where we, that's where we fell, the very first one that we did.
Sure.
Then when I went out and wanted to have, uh, Regent Twelve be our, uh, uh, general contractor, which they were all, well, they were gonna do that. But then the electrical part of it was beyond their expertise, beyond their scope of what they do. And so then they said, well, you know, you really don't need a, you know, big, it's not a big enough project for an engineer or an architect. It's just, you know, but they just didn't have the.
I, I think that's a, that's a Colin question.
Well, we're trying to get that answered by Colin and now we're, we passed and we.
Have you talked to Martha?
Um, I have not. I, so please, okay, just talk straight to Martha, okay?
She, her, her plate doesn't seem to be as full.
Okay. Okay.
I think it's his, but I think she managed to always scoop your peas out of the way so we can get in there.
Um, I, I just, one thing I do know is when I went to approach the county attorney as a department. I was diverted to Colin because of the RFP side, I guess.
That ain't her thing.
Yeah, I, I, I guess he's more familiar with that process. So that's.
That makes sense.
So.
To quote you, you can write an RFP about anything. So I don't understand the legality of it. We can write an RFP about anything.
I don't know the guidelines of ARPA as far as if you can farm that out directly or not.
I don't have anything other than that because it's not in the general fund.
Oh, so we're pulling, just from pulling from general funds.
Well, all ARPA money, money's in there.
Okay, okay.
Correct her.
I don't.
You don't have to worry about federal.
Okay, okay, as far as the guidelines are concerned, okay.
Never have, never have.
I'm being brought up to speed right now.
There you go, that's why we asked all the questions. So, so knowing that then, you know, this is not.
I mean, I would, like I said, I wouldn't see why, why not then, so.
I'll tell you, because we're counting that got less than ten million dollars. That's why the ARPA funds, uh, guidelines that they originally had out. A year and a half ago, went away.
Okay.
And so you're doing county RFP.
Okay, so, all right, um, yeah, if that's the case, yeah.
No legality.
Yeah, um, I just want to make sure I'm, you know, doing right by the county in this scenario and take the trudge in someplace that I, because I'm completely in my unknown here, so.
Your built, your room is completely your specs and what you want. And what we need upstairs is nothing, you know, we can't move the, the public health in there.
Right.
Until they have computers up and running.
Yep.
And one of the things now, you're building that as a safe house, that if a tornado came.
Yep.
Somebody pointed out to me that we're in the same pathway, the courthouse in the city center and they're like, seems like we're, you know.
Well, I mean.
And so we're, they're wondering why we're doing all of this in a building a block away for, uh, safe house or.
If you're gonna play that game, I mean.
It's not a game, I'm not playing any game.
Well, I mean, I'm saying you can build a building anywhere in this town, but you gotta have a way to get to that building in a relatively. Decent distance regarding public health, otherwise you're just gonna move public health somewhere else. You can move it to Dow City if you really wanted to, if that's the case.
We don't have a building there, otherwise we would.
Right, but that's my point a little bit here. So, um.
Well, is this more about public health or is this more about your, uh, uh, off-campus, uh, safety place for your?
Well, I mean, I, I, it's a little bit of both, okay? Um, my intent is if we do, if we have future growth, okay, we have that capability.
For the, for the court.
For, for the county.
For the county.
Okay, not necessarily just for the courthouse, but for, if for some reason we wanted, we go another department somewhere, you could throw them in there or whatever. Or if you wanted to turn it into an EOC, you know, emergency operations center, you could do that, you'd have that capability. Um, it, it just, it gives you a nice infrastructure spot to start building from. Is what, what, what this IT room does for you. So that's, that's the intent here.
Let me ask you this. Since your office seems to be small, would you want your office there?
The only problem, I, I would, I, I don't have an issue with me being over there per se, okay, as far as from a physicality standpoint. But I have found that I service more here than over there, or over at public health.
Absolutely, there's no doubt about that.
And that being said, I don't think it would really be a good move to, to do that, even though I'd love to do it.
We just love the space, but I don't think having you out of, outside of this building.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just like this morning when we were open that year.
So, but, I mean.
Just a question that came to mind that exact moment, I never thought about it before.
I mean, but that being said, and I'm just, I'm not speaking for any department on any behalf in this scenario. But maybe you take someone else.
Okay.
Just for, for thought. So.
We got a market spot, just take, hold, hold your breath for a minute, all right?
All right, so those, so.
Okay, so you, so I'm gonna have to.
So what does the rest of the board think about a special RFP just for electrical, since that has been three times now? We can't move forward because of the electrical.
Same to me, like the project's too small.
It's too small.
Then you're gonna make it smaller, yeah.
Then you're gonna make it smaller, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, because I guess it'd be nice to know if the reason that Frazier can't get an electrician is exactly that reason.
I mean, because I guess it'd be nice to know if the reason that Frazier can't get an electrician is exactly that reason, because it's too small. If that's the case, having a separate RFP isn't gonna matter, right?
They're electrician. They haven't, I don't understand. It must be a specialized thing or something that they.
Because in your, in the bid, you know, the eight point two and eight point three is what you would think would be, just go to the electricians, right? That's.
Um, yeah, I mean, would that was, it would be able to, obviously, you know, I think your power, AC, and it would, yeah, and then the breakers. Um, you can't forget about the generator, though. There is eight point three, point four.
Yeah, all, yeah, eight point three includes everything, eight point three, whatever.
Yep, electrical, yep, yep, yep.
All under eight point three.
Yep, 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 so, yeah.
Uh, I just, I don't under, you know, I mean.
We don't understand.
I don't understand why there's, I, I can understand electricians being too busy, but you know, the supply and demand thing comes into effect. They need to charge more to make that job desirable, you know, I mean, that's, something is not adding up.
But we can't even get a bid.
That's my point, something's not adding up.
I would do this electrical for you for a hundred thousand dollars, take it or leave it, at this point.
Please don't say things like that out loud, but, uh.
You know.
Too late.
Too late.
So.
The cat's out of the bag.
Okay.
They're gonna come flocking in now, right now.
We'll have all kinds of electricians showing up with their golden lunchbox. I, I think that you keep it together. I mean, it's a project.
Okay, that's fine. Just trying to work outside the box to keep this thing moving. It's so frustrating.
Well, if this don't fly, I think we need to bring a whole basement into one project.
Yeah, I, I think you might be real.
The whole thing into one project, because sometime, you know.
Well, upstairs is much smaller.
Not, not basement, to me, on the surface. Beast made one off this electrical part of it, where we're gonna need an electrician to come in and do that whole damn base.
Yeah.
And are they gonna be doing, are we double charge, gonna get double charged for stuff that they used to do them? Because we're already over here, we just pull these wires. That's the only thing, if this don't work, like, we really need to really think things through.
Well, now that the basement is good.
It's not getting like I thought it was, but it's, it's better than it was, so.
There was, there was a reason they didn't, I can't think what it was, um.
The, the side of the point, I think, by making it smaller, I think we're just gonna limit ourselves even more.
Yeah.
I would think, go with this, just another thirty days and I'm almost saying that's too long to wait.
Way too much work out for it. That's the problem. Take just, trying to find somebody for hail damage, it's, it'll just, uh.
Well, I also, this isn't necessarily the easiest with some of the cutting in the concrete and do the things that need to be done with this RFP. Where it's like, if you're offered to rent a big chunk of ground, but you had this bad piece to farm.
Well.
You work it out altogether where.
Yeah.
Making it smaller in this case is not gonna bring anybody to the table.
That's like trying to buy three acres of ground on the other side of the creek at the same price as you would have a hundred and sixty for, you know?
Right.
Like, boy, I'm gonna have to, I'm not gonna do it for that same price.
That's where I, just some of the construction people I've talked with, you say, well, if it was a whole thing, I, I would deal with some of the stuff that wasn't the easiest because you know, you have the bigger.
Get your duels on department side of that, hell, the rest of it, you can.
Yeah, no.
I get you.
Let's see, I, I think you'll get it.
I've talked.
So.
Like I said, if they're electrical contractors, like, I don't understand.
I was.
Are your building an electric? Isn't that the title?
No.
No, no.
Frazier Building.
This Frazier Building, okay, my man.
Well, Tom Hatt's been up to look at it and.
I thought they were like.
So, I, I guess to keep things moving at this point, move it, extend it thirty days?
That's all right.
Well, time out. Do you wanna extend it another thirty days and then end up doing the whole basement? Because now we're thirty days, then thirty days plus, you know? Is this the time to?
This is gonna be the quickest avenue to get that room.
Okay, all right, stay focused.
If we do the whole basement at this time, then we'll have to stop, go back to drawing board to redo an RFP for the basement, and that could be thirty days down the road.
Yep.
Now we're getting past a good, uh, outside work and we need.
Does Western Iowa Tech still have the carpentry schools, plumbing schools, and electrical schools? Does anybody know?
Yep.
They do?
Yep, yeah, Galen, uh.
Are they Dirks?
Is one of their instructors.
Taught here in Dennison or are they taught?
You know, I don't, I don't know.
I have them, I have them west here.
Here in Dennison.
I don't know if it's still there.
It used to be in Maple. I don't know, I don't know, that's a good question.
Okay.
I'll go talk to Jessica.
Jessica can answer that.
All right.
So.
Just curious, I guess.
We gotta start thinking, yeah.
Right.
Think outside the box, because this is really, because we need to get the outside stuff done before.
We built the house at Yellsmoke for the county, Western, okay, and then Carpenter School built that Ranger House.
Well, Duck Court has, uh.
Right.
Trade departments also.
Exactly, right. Maybe to learn, who knows?
I'll be on it.
Since it's small.
So, is there, um, what does this need from me?
We need a motion.
As far as, are we going through this timeline?
Hold on over.
Do we? Do we? Do we need a motion to extend that?
On the agenda to do so?
I'm making a motion to extend the.
Second.
RFP timeline for certain room till July seventeen.
July seventeen? And then just so we know, the, the date for awarding that is July eighteen, because it's Monday to Tuesday. To, so we can do the date, seventeenth or the eighth, okay.
Don't, they have to be extended by the eighteenth so we can, seventeen so we can award on the eighteenth.
Yep, there you go. That work for you?
Yeah, that works for me.
Got a motion made by Mr. Schultz, second by Mr. Mulbauer. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Make sure you get it done this time.
Sir, yes, sir, sir.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Have a good day, Jake.
I did see it.
I'll try.
So only question I have, maybe it says it.
Hail damage.
Yeah, is what did we get for, did we get a check for, from our insurance for, right? Uh, hail damage? We received a claim. Did we have a claim?
Yeah, we filed a claim because we're just getting the, whoa.
Well, here, maybe phrase this, has our insurance company been notified that we got damaged to our, and, okay. Already, I'm, I'm getting pretty fluent with dealing with the insurance company of hail damage.
Oh, boy, more than we want.
I mean, the county's filed claims on vehicles so far.
Yes, all I just, I just wanna know, I was curious as to if our check from insurance was going to cover this or or has the insurance.
That'll have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible on it.
Minus deductible.
Right.
Obviously, I just, like.
We're not that.
Roof was, they estimated my roof and, you know, I took that estimate and it was right spot on why I got that payment on my new roof. I campered, I fought, I fought and fought because they wanted to give me four thousand. I had twenty thousand dollars of damage, so.
Oh, my gosh.
For what?
I finally had it back with me, so. So, through the process, that's why I'm just trying to say where we at with that process.
Yeah.
This stuff needs to get fixed. We need to get on it. Air conditioners, yeah, I don't think we wanna let that stuff.
Nope. Have you deposited the check?
We don't have a check. We're not that far.
Long as we're going.
Depositing a check usually is an agreement with.
Yeah.
Correct. Amount that the insurance company has offered, so.
Yeah.
A lot of times, if you're not agreeing, don't deposit the check, yeah.
And I don't think it to you, Lee, I mean, we gotta, we have, you know, with the estimates from people that would fix it, not the insurance company's estimate. You know, and then usually, I, and, and in fact, my, my agent told me that if there's some discrepancy, turn that in and we'll get.
That's the one check I did cash with mine, so if we find out more, just let us know, we'll, we'll make it right with you, which is fine, as long as they hold true to their word.
Yeah, exactly.
Which I'm beginning to wonder if I did the right thing on that, but.
Okay.
Tell.
Did you wanna look at that?
We got hail damage quote to fix our air conditioners.
Yeah.
Which is getting into the season where we're gonna be on full, full demand.
Yeah, we won't be able to get somebody. Air conditioner people are.
Imagine they probably need to order some parts and pieces, I'm guessing. Well, I, well, look, for me, it didn't look like it just made.
Kind of like.
So, Mr. Chair, you're gonna.
Could you talk about this, that the citizens input?
Do you wanna do anything with that? It's an action item.
Right, so, so you wanna move forward, Mr. Chair, your recommendation to approve that, get him moving forward on it, and insurance will cover it?
I, I think that's, that's probably the motion I'm looking for, is to approve them numbers to get it rolling. Remember, we have a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible was already stated, and, uh.
I'll make that motion.
Do we need to reach out to anybody to make sure that if there's difference in what we have for our, whoever we hired to do this, the contractor? If there's difference, we're gonna have issues with that or?
That is, that is.
Oh, that is them?
That is the contractor.
Okay, that isn't from the insurance company?
No, that's, that's, they don't fix it for that much, but we don't.
Roll Carol control.
The insurance company thinks it's worth.
It needs fixed.
Yeah.
Yep.
Or, if one way or another, we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Through insurance reimbursements or out of general fund.
I'm just trying to see if you guys wanna add anything to this agenda.
The good thing about that is that we know how much it's gonna cost to fix, so when the insurance company says they're only gonna give us ten, this is what it's actually gonna cost us.
So twenty-five hundred, okay, so there's a motion on the floor.
In a second.
And a second for Mr. Schultz, that we, uh, move forward on getting the air conditioners fixed and turning it into our insurance. All, any other discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Chair votes aye.
It's easier to persuade your insurance company when you have.
Do I need to sign down here?
Yeah.
Versus when they come out the day after the storm and say, hey, we're gonna get a check.
Do you want to stamp it or?
I can.
Now, let's do that. That's a pretty small space for him. Do you need to still try to sign that?
Just sign it wherever.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
You wanna make such a big tea at room?
Okay, next on the agenda is citizens input. Um, did you need to, wanna talk about these, right?
Yeah, so the June, there's a June thirtieth thing on your schedule and, um, it's for cash count. And it's also for the Hickams loan that Lynn was talking about, so it'll start at eight o'clock in the morning.
Eight, eight hours.
So, yes.
Four thirty, four is when?
Oh, it'll be afternoon, won't it?
It'd be an afternoon session.
So we can, uh, you can do, uh, um, end of year cash count.
End of fiscal year cash count, so we need to be in here around four, right? June thirtieth, you're the Friday. And the office.
Friday, otherwise you could do it July third, I guess. No, we can't because we gotta do that loan. So, it's gotta be.
So we have a Friday, a Friday meeting, June thirtieth.
End of year.
Sixteen hundred.
Yeah, I would do it later.
Four thirty or five?
Four thirty, yeah.
Just.
You're gonna wanna do it at four thirty.
Probably come in and do the transfer and then do a cash count.
You can do, I mean, you can be, by the time you sit down at this table at four thirty, most of the cash count will be done. Because most of our department should be able to do prior to.
Treasurers.
Treasurers, not them.
Yep.
They'll be the last ones.
They'll be getting their deposit ready.
Yeah.
If we stop on the way in.
And if we know that.
Like, is the dump and landfill, are they, uh, closed by then?
They close four.
Yeah. Yeah, so whoever does them could go out at the end of their close business.
So here's my question, the treasurer, will she have gone to the bank by like?
I have no idea. I don't know what her schedule is. I don't know.
Okay, because I remember one time she hadn't gone to the banks. We had to count, add up all of her checks for the bank.
Okay.
And if she's been to the bank, then we just have to count what's in.
Plan on starting our meeting at four thirty.
Four, sixteen thirty.
We can start cash count.
Before that.
Four.
Who's covering conservation out again?
On the thirtieth.
I can't, it doesn't.
That's what I'm asking. I'm gonna be coming through, either you're gonna do it or I'm gonna.
I might be a little late.
Don't matter.
Because I got radiation at three.
Okay.
Forty-five, it'll be done at four. I should be, it'll be, I'll be twelve.
Well, we'll still have a quorum, so we just count. You're not, yeah.
Okay.
So we'll get those.
That's my last one, so I kinda probably need.
We get those cash counts sheet done in the next.
Gotta ring that damn bell.
So you all have them ahead of time.
Okay, okay. And we land, I wanna go Yellsmoke. You're gonna go to public health.
And so you'll know that there is no meeting the next week, the week of July third.
We're off.
Really? We get a day off?
What?
First time.
Unless you wanna meet.
How bad do you wanna see me?
Not that bad.
Me neither.
What will I do that? I don't even know what to do now.
Well, it's a holiday, so enjoy your July fourth, so.
All right.
Yep.
All right, so sixteen thirty. Don't need a motion for that, it's our.
No, make it. All right.
All right. Confirmation. We got a consent, citizens input. Ma'am?
Hello, I was here last week, but the meeting kinda went long and was a little tense, and I thought I was still back.
You sensed that, huh?
Yeah, sensed that. So I wanted to address two separate issues. At the time, actually, I had another call in, I was giving one day. And then the FEMSA meeting, I kinda wanted to give an overview. I was down for the two days and, um, found some things interesting. But the, uh, the first one I wanted to talk about was, um, water in our capture facility. So the capture facility is what Summit calls that, and I'll point it out, obviously. Minnesota, gotta go back a little bit. Minnesota does not have a, their IUB is called their Public Utilities Commission. And they don't believe the pipeline is of public use, hence they don't, um, have intimate domain up there. But what they did require was an environmental impact survey be completed. And this, um, this was actually under oath. It's a public hearing and it was online. I was able to go into one meeting with it. So all the, all the speakers were under, I mean, I said under oath and, um, so we got true statements, I guess, I wouldn't say that, that sounds bad. Um, so it was held in May and they're talking about, there's two lines up in Minnesota. This particular one was going from, oh, the Otter Trail to Wilkens. So it's a smaller one. There's only one ethanol plant involved with it. It's called Green Plains Ethanol. And Summit testified that they would need thirteen gallons, thirteen million gallons of water annually to operate the capture facility in that plant. And I know Jean has brought up the, the water usage and, you know, they come back, this is not the hundred and thirty-four thousand gallons needed to hydrostatic test the line. Um, this is actually about day-to-day operations. So, and, and Summit also, of course, is going to all the board meetings and overcoming these objections and saying it's ten percent more. Well, my question is, ten percent more of what?
What?
And I couldn't, I mean, I did the research and I couldn't get, um, online as far as how big the Green Plains ethanol plant would be compared to the ethanol in Dennison. But what I did say, I did find out, it's kind of, I don't know, kind of apples to apples. But Green Plains testified they release a hundred and ninety thousand metric tons of CO2 every year. Summit testified that between the thirty-two ethanol plants in all the states um along the route, that they will capture nine million metric tons. So, I did the math and like, so the average per ethanol plant would be approximately two hundred and eighty-one thousand metric tons released. So, I'm thinking since Green Plains is at a hundred and ninety and their average is at two eighty-one, it's probably one of the smaller ethanol plants along the route. So, I'm thinking it could be apples to apples to ethanol, or to Andersons. Um, so thirteen million gallons, I was thinking, well, I don't really know, is that, I mean, to me, that sounds huge, but maybe in the scheme of things, it's not so huge. So, I called the Dennison Municipal Water Plant and I got rattled around and finally spoke with Luke Gilmore. Um, and I explained what I was looking for and he basically said, yeah, we do run a line out to there, but it's just for the office, the restroom and kitchen, so on. They have their own wells, and I said, oh, okay, well then, no impact, that requires wasting your time. He said, no, it would impact Dennison because they draw from the same aquifer.
Same aquifer.
Yeah, so he said, it would definitely have an impact. And I asked him, I said, would you be willing to come to the board and explain this and, cause I am not a water expert, I like, for best to be. So, he said, definitely, if you gave me his phone number, I'd be happy to share that afterwards, I wouldn't want that in public record.
So, this is for their capture facility?
Yes.
And this is gonna be a repetitive use of that much water?
Yes, it's annually, thirteen million gallons.
Annually.
Yes, and this is what, from the Green Plains, remember, this is the Green Plains, Minnesota plant. But that's why I said I tried to get it apples to apples.
Okay.
What are the, what would Summit use it for? It's part of the process of?
It's part of the dehydration process, so it runs it through this water with the chemical, I wanted to get to that next. And then it, it, that's what dehydrates the water out of the CO2, so then it will go, the CO2 would go in the pipe.
So, what happens with the wastewater?
That's my next point, thank you, good, good segue. That was, we did not plan that. But the chemical they're going to be using is um, and I'm not a chemist either, but it's triethylene glyco. T E G.
L-ethylene glyco.
Yeah, exactly, my saying arrived, and everybody knows.
Alright, sounds good to me, you did a good job.
Okay, thanks. So, this is the Stan's wastewater. And the Green Plain plant estimated between eight and ten gallons of wastewater we release per minute into their system. So, but in the, in the permit, wasn't testified, but in the permit document that Summit had to file, they said they were currently exploring options for managing their wastewater. So, I don't know if, I don't think Ethanol has a, or Anderson has a lagoon out there. I don't know what they're planning or doing it, but I'm just bringing that point to you. Somebody said once, they, it might be like a radiator, that they recirculate this, but then why would they have an eight to ten gallons per minute released? I don't know, just questions.
Released into the treatment facility or something like that.
In Green Plains, that's what I believe they said, they testified they would release eight, eight to ten gallons of wastewater would be released per minute. So, um, the question is released into what? Yeah, we don't know what.
Oh, the Andersons don't have a lagoon.
Well, one board, after testimony came out, I believe, I don't know if it was Wright County, I'm not sure which county board it was. But they brought these questions up. And Killy, Riley, Isaac, and I think somebody else from Summit was there and we kept getting, no, not my department, no, I like, you know, issues, no, I'm an engineer. You're gonna have to get the capture facility team, to my knowledge, the capture facility team, unless you guys met privately with them.
Nope.
I've never, I've never heard.
I didn't know we had a different team.
I think I've dealt with everybody.
So, I'm just bringing to your attention that it might be something that you want to investigate a little bit further, especially with the water.
Yeah, that's.
Very research, you know, with uh continental carbonics, I mean, they've gotta have some sort of similar capture.
That too.
Boy, you guys are just on my wavelength, I have not done it yet, but I did on the way, actually, the way to town, I'm thinking I'm driving over that pipeline right now. And I was gonna, is it, that's Trevor Lally, right?
That's Anderson.
Hell, nah.
Oh, that's Anderson, um, I can't think of the name.
Not sure who's that.
I can't remember, I have it written down what his name is, but no, I have not contacted them, but I would like to. But see, because this, this capture, I don't know if the Dry Eyes actually uses pure CO2 or they have their own process to dehydrate over there. I don't, I don't know.
I would think you just, you know, I don't, that's, I don't understand information, I just figured they put it under pressure or whatever.
Yeah.
Wouldn't use any water.
I don't think they use it, but.
Hydro testing.
Dehydrating, with hydration?
Why do you need to dehydrate?
Thank you.
That's a good question, we need, if you don't mind, I might call Riley and tell him to get in here and bring the right people to answer that.
Yeah, I mean, I would, it goes, I'm thinking thirteen million, and I'm doing the math here, going thirteen million of, of what percentage would, cause like I said, Summit keeps saying ten percent. Ten percent of what? What does Andersons currently use for water? Since it's their own wells, do they even, no, I mean, I don't know, when you have your own well, do you know how many, how many milliliters?
Using that water bothers me.
Me too.
That's a lot of water.
Me too.
So, I mean, that, 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 I mean, I shouldn't say it bothers me, I, 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 we need to understand why.
It's concern, you need to ask a serious concern. So, and then like I said, Summit is overcoming objections, they're going to, and you guys are gonna get it too, it's coming down the pipe, they're gonna do their overcoming objection to safety thing. And they keep saying it's only ten percent above what they're currently using. So, my question is, what are they currently using and what's ten percent of? Cause thirteen million means they're, they're using a hundred and thirty million, if I did my math correctly, that's a lot of water. So, I mean, my, so, okay, so the water usage and then the wastewater, this chemical, where it's, it's going. And the third point that came out of that was the electric use. Um, they predict thirty-nine million kilowatt hours annually for the new process. That's as far as I got with that one, cause I know my sister, she checked out at WIPCO and she was shut down immediately, we can't get any information out. But I don't think it'd be WIPCO, wouldn't it be R I C? I don't know what, what electric plant would serve.
WIPCO is R I C.
Harrison County R I C Services Andersons.
Andersons, okay.
So, it's another question to ask, is a hundred, is thirty-nine million kilowatt hours a big deal? And if so, where are they gonna get that power? Are they gonna be building this, add on to the substation out there? I don't know. So, I, I just wanna bring that to your attention, I'm not quite sure.
No water and rolling brownouts?
I could try to, try to research that, but.
Would be such an opportunity.
I mean, is there electrical power that goes to the pipeline throughout the whole length of the pipeline? I would say it would just be in the compressor pump, right, compressor stations.
Yeah.
The, and the, oh, that other thing.
However, whatever they use to capture, it would probably require some sort of compressors, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, this is just for the Green Plains, this, this thirty-nine million kilowatt hours, that was just for that ethanol plant.
For the ethanol. Can I get a copy of that for you, Lynn?
I mean, so, now with the carbon, now with the crystalline.
They've got a copying machine right there.
I know, but I have my notes.
Oh.
I'd like to see that, you might go, but I'd like.
Can I just send it to you?
Just email it to us.
I'll email it to you in my notes and then.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and then also, I mean, if you want the actual documentation, I do have it, I just don't have it organized. Um, I mean, how it came off into the, their permit.
Well, I'm very concerned about the water aspect, electricity, I think we, we're, we're generating. I mean, it might need a bigger substation, all that, I don't, that's probably a question that should be asked or could be asked anyway, but the water thing troubles me. I mean, I just wanna, I just want an answer.
Me too.
And, you know, we're, we're, right now, we're already low and we haven't even started the summer season yet.
I know, so, it's, you walk, you drive over the Bullier River and it's like, I mean, it's growing trees in the middle of the river now, and so.
If we can ask your Summit contact, email.
I'm having, bring in, put in water, and their capture people.
Now, I mean, I don't.
Capture facility, so, probably quick, it's tied up at least by eleven-thirty for F S A meeting. Um, also, the pumping station, remember, clear back when we kept talking about the pumping station? That is now, for any county that has an ethanol plant, the pumping station is considered part of that process. So, the pumping station is not gonna be on someone's land, it's gonna be at the ethanol plant.
Really?
Yeah, so that came out too. Um, and then real quick with FEMSA, like I said, I'll have to come back and give you my report, but I did not realize that FEMSA, there's like three parts to the pipeline, you have the captured facility, the ethanol plant, then you have where it goes into the pipe, where it comes out of the pipe, this is the second section, and coming out of the pipe going into the ground. FISMAs only the pipe, they don't have any jurisdiction over the, the ethanol plant or the capture facility. I was shocked, I thought it was the whole thing, so I wanna.
So, they don't have any? I didn't get, I didn't catch that.
They're very fallen OSHA.
Yeah, it was, it was in one of the, one of the segments, and then, cause I caught, and I, my concerns is a, the capture facility, that's what's closest to our farm, I mean, noise, water, electricity, everything. Um, but I asked her after the panel, cause they were so good about answering questions between panels and between things, so. Cause I said, well, then who does it? And she said, it's the EPA or OSHA that you're gonna need to go to for any kind of answers for the capture facility.
Yeah, I expected her to drive the other, probably imagine that, EPA, OSHA would have all the control on that.
So, I just thought that was kind of an interesting tidbit too that we, with FISMAs.
So, they would inspect the pipe that's gonna be used there and everything, like FEMSA talked about, they, they go to the factories and inspect the pipe? So, that's what OSHA would be doing then, or?
Good question, I don't, I don't know, I, I, I don't know type of, that's a really good question. I would, I would assume, because I've done.
Yeah, I can check, you know?
No, okay, I'm assuming everything.
I kept getting bumped off that damn thing.
That's what you said last week, that's too bad, but they are gonna be bringing it out, they taped it all, so they're gonna be putting it on their website. So, um, and next week, I'm gonna talk about Satasha, because it was so powerful, they had the actual victim and his caregiver, cause he can't do things on his own anymore. Um, and then the EMS person who rescued him, and then the EMS director for that county, and then also the newspaper person who broke the story and had done a lot of research on it. They were all there, and Wednesday night, they had a, a dinner for the landowners and that, they were the guest speakers of it. And it was, it was very, very informative.
Interesting.
Very interesting, and, and I'm, I have three more minutes for athlete, um, but I did, I did say afterwards, I talked to him, I said, and I'm throwing, I didn't name any names, but I did say we have got a couple board supervisors, members who are on the fire department and don't really have, don't see the concern of a CO2 pipeline that's any more dangerous than the natural gas, and I don't think that you would.
I don't think you have to name names, but.
I didn't name, I just, I just said that, I said, how would you, how can we convince them otherwise? And he said, have them give me a call. So, he was, I think he'd be more than willing to come on to Zoom, I just think that you guys might find it interesting just because of your fire, fireman background.
And I'm, I'll just, I'll stand behind my point on that, and I'm like, how many, we've had one instance in the U.S. with a pipeline of this nature, how many instances have they had with natural gas or L B gas in the U.S.? That's where, that continues to resonate, my fear of the safety aspect of this is way safer than any of that. I mean, we had incidents in Crawford County with a natural gas pipeline back in nineteen eighty-nine. And that, you know, that was, that was a, I was in high school, they evacuated the high schools, I don't know.
Right, and you know, I.
This stuff happens every day. As a first responder, I would much rather respond to a CO2 pipeline rupture than something that can explode.
Well, you know. Interpreting, interpreting titles.
That's why I use that as, I know that's not gonna explode. We need to evacuate people from the downward area as fast as we can and get them in someplace where they can breathe. We don't have to worry about the whole world catching fire.
No, you just have to worry about people dying because they can't breathe.
Well, if you're in the, if the whole world catches fire, they're not gonna be able to breathe either. That, that, that's my reasoning for that.
I understand, I understand your opinion, but I don't, I don't agree with you, but that's okay, you know.
Well, I think we're agreeing on the same thing, it's just the, the level as a first responder of, of what you're dealing with is why I feel it's a lot safer.
So, if you're interested in that, his name is Jack, and I have his, I gave him his business card, so he'd be happy to talk to anybody, but I know, I'm assuming he'd be willing to come on to Zoom, I know he's went to other.
We're never, we're never afraid of information, how's that?
He's from um, Yazoo.
She's got a sort of.
Yazoo County Office, it's from Miss, he's from Mississippi, and he has a Mississippi accent, but when they come, so, but he did testify in one of the panels on FEMSA, but it wasn't nearly as, you know, the night before what we got. But I mean, he, to your point, I mean, he like said the first hour, they couldn't use, their, their vehicles stopped, they could not rescue people because they, they couldn't get in with the fire trucks.
No oxygen.
It stopped, no oxygen, they were using golf carts to evacuate people. They had the S U V, S, no, if you guys can help.
S C V A.
Yes, they didn't have enough, they called another county for that, but to bring them in, they had a few um, few rescue people who said, I'm not waiting, people are, people are getting hurt in there and not, you know, we need to go in, they said, one of them made four trips in, by the fifty, couldn't have a good, he couldn't talk to them, so they said, we're pulling you, you can't do it again. But he went in to rescue people over, I mean, and I don't know the exact stats, I know from what the FEMSA records show is only um, no fatalities, so. But they said they only, they only record them when they actually have an overnight stay in the hospital, I didn't get it. Well, they said this was like triage, it was a lot like what we did with COVID, when someone came to the hospital with a bad cough and it was, it's like, go home, gets worse, come back. So, the same type of thing that they dealt with, but it, it was very powerful, very.
Those types of things, I, I'm just, I wanna all the knowledge or all the information so we can develop the knowledge and a response plan. I'm, I'm, I'm not afraid of it happening, I should, if we're prepared for it, do you get my drift?
I know that.
I mean, so, I, and, and we've got some outstanding fire services in our county, so if you give them the proper information and tools, see, and that's what I keep asking. When I went, like, I went to the one we had out here at Boulders, the training facility, that was a great training, but, you know, you don't know all these things and, and.
That's where this Jack might be able to help you, cause he said after the back.
Might be a good to have.
They got all sorts of stuff in the pipeline company, they got CO2 monitors, they got. Thanks, sorry. They got a better uh, um, plan to alert people, all this was provided, of course, after the accident, that you guys, but it'd be, like what you just said, be proactive on it.
Yeah.
And making sure that you're covered, and this might just be an outside party to help you insist on some stuff from the pipeline company, and they should just pay you for it.
Yeah.
Can you just include that in here, you know?
I, so I can.
That'd be great.
Yeah, so, anyway, if you want Luke Gilmore's number, I have that and I can, I, 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 okay, you got it, okay, I just didn't wanna.
I talked to him further.
I got it, no, thank you, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that information.
Yeah, I appreciate it. This side of Minnesota has that, oh, and this is real quick side of our event, several, several, um, Indian tribes, reservations, uh, different groups requested the I U V do that same environmental impact study.
I seen that.
Turned down every one of them, they refused to do it, refused to acquire it. But that was sad.
I think that's a federal level thing or something.
No, it's a state.
Is it a state?
Yeah, let's take the Minnesota.
Mister Newspaper Man?
Thank you.
You're all just sitting here looking at Google, the Illinois extension says the typical ethanol plant capable of producing forty-nine gallons of ethanol per year could use up to three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and thirty thousand gallons of water per day, four hundred and twenty-one gallons of water per year. So, are, are we, I mean, that's what we're talking about here, the use of water and.
I don't know, that's use of water in an ethanol plant, so they're.
Just making ethanol, yeah.
It's already doing that, it has nothing to do with the pipeline, whether or not it's.
That's what we were trying to figure out, if it was additional waters.
Well, I, I assume it's a pipeline.
My guess would be ten percent more, whatever they use it.
Cause it's, it's strictly CO2 in the pipeline.
Yeah.
I don't think you can use water, turn it into water.
Yeah, don't know how that would work, I agree.
I would agree with that, your statement.
So, then you just have wastewater, you're wanting to know where it's going and what, if there's anything, I can't imagine, I don't know what there is.
I would think if you just ask one of the people from Summit, if there's extra water usage, you wanna get, like you know, but, I mean, it sounds to me like it's just part of the ethanol process.
Process.
Again, I would, I would think if that was an additional continental harmonics, if we tax them, the system very similar, I reckon, I think. Cause I mean, they're trying to figure.
And I'm sure they use a ton of water out there, they have their own wells.
Well, they're, they're in our aquifer though, in our aquifer as well. Same one.
We gotta get that CO2 straight so they can track.
Dave, wouldn't be in the optimism. Okay, thank you for that. I'm gonna try to get a hold of Riley, tell me what, we have questions about water usage and wastewater. Uh, wastewater, I'm more concerned with where are they going that, and if there are anything in there we need to worry about. I mean, if you need to.
I have to ask Andersons, they just currently, what they.
What they do with their wastewater? Do they pump it back into our?
That has to do with the, that's what I'm trying to explain, it's just.
I think it's from your carbon, from your pop and everything too.
Mister Mike from Minnow.
Mike, did you uh?
Nah, just here, listen.
You just stop by to, stop by to make sure we're working late?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, I appreciate it.
Other, if you don't have any news from them, I have one other thing, but go ahead.
Do we have anything from the people out there in Zoom land? Or Zoomologists?
Um, yeah, this is Bonnie up in Milford, I was listening to Cindy and I too think it would be a great idea if you would get somebody from Sartesha on Zoom to talk to you about what happened down there. And I don't have the figures in front of me, but I just want to point out that the total number of miles of CO2 pipeline in the United States is about two percent of the total number of miles of pipeline in the country. So you're kind of, you don't really have a comparison there for the danger level of the CO2 pipelines. But I can get those figures, but I don't have them right in front of me. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else? Hearing none? Madam Auditor, it's your turn.
Comparison, because the lower percentage of miles of pipeline, it'd be a lot lower percentage of.
Accident, yeah.
We, I mean, you can take any equation and whatever you want to put into it to make it, make your story more powerful. That's, this is my, my side.
I got you, yeah.
It's a valid point, only two percent, but.
Your statistics.
The statistics, statistics. I mean, cause you could frame it and say, in the history of the world, there, there has only been one CO2 pipeline accident ever. Right. There's one way you can order it. And you would be telling the truth. And there's only been one. And that's Satasha. So, you know, it all depends as a percent, since we are just getting started, it's something that we need to be concerned about certainly. But it can be blown out of perspective.
I just want our E M A, our, our emergency responders to have all the equipment, training that they would ever need to deal with. That's my biggest concern.
I agree. And rest, I'm rescuing citizens from a cloud of CO2 or a cloud of natural gas. They're gonna have the same, same problem.
And, and even like, well, we've got, we train with, with ammonia. I mean, so we, I mean, we've, we've got some, some familiarity with dealing with things that are robbing oxygen.
Very good training compares. Non-flammable, highly contagious, inhale.
Yeah.
It will kill you.
Suck the air right out of you in a second. I remember that day out there by Otter, that we were driving, there was a, one of them leaking and I drove by on the highway. Oh my God, it just like something, somebody squeezed your lungs. Anyway.
Terry, what do you got for us?
Madam Auditor.
So I asked the question last week of our auditor from Grown Well, Valenkind, Chris Nelson.
Okay.
I asked about the wage increases of employees and the documentation that we currently get from our department heads. And that the form goes before the Board of Supervisors for approval or I said, should I call it acknowledgement? I said, if the increase doesn't create a budget amendment, do we need the acknowledgement of the Board of Supervisors? Cause that was a big, big discussion had by this board. Um, and so Chris answers me, he says, I would say that if the department head has the authority to hire an individual or increase an employee's wage, it would not require an acknowledgement, approval slash approval of the supervisors. However, it may be a necessary courtesy to the supervisors to keep them appraised, apprised of employment changes. So, there we go. What is the desire of this board? Do we just put them in your folder for you to witness? See every single week, you know, do we just do that?
I kind of, I think we continue to do the same as we do. I mean, the sign of, say, you know.
The sign to me now is just an acknowledgement of what it is.
And it gives us.
Right, not enough approval.
But it gives you, you look at it as like, all right, just.
I don't, I like the official document rolling across here so we can view it.
I mean, and we won't stop that document because otherwise we have nothing else.
I would also like the media to actually have knowledge of what's going on with the expenses by individual departments in that regard. Cause if somebody's getting carried away making payments, you know, I think that the taxpayers would like to know, so I guess we should like to know.
And I think that it's just us approving it or not, that it's actually the department head or the other electrical official.
And those, what goes up does not come back down, what comes wages and so.
And accountability and transparency, that's what you hear about government all the time. So we just will make, keep making sure that that's happening as best we can.
Thank you for that information.
Yeah, no problem. I just, I don't want to be accused of saying and doing things that I'm not saying or doing. So.
Yeah.
It's not gonna happen anymore.
All right, I appreciate that.
On my watch, anyway.
Oh, just, I wonder if you might wanna amend your, the form you get on, so in eight years, when there's a completely different board of supervisors, they don't have to go to the state auditor and ask the same question. You know, maybe you could just add a sentence or two, acknowledge, whatever. This is an acknowledgement or whatever.
Did somebody say something that made you feel like you were a bug on the spot? Oh, come on.
Yes. That's a good idea, man. I, I don't mind that, just, yeah, sorry.
I'm tracking you now.
No, that's okay.
Sometimes I get lost in the fog.
Um, I was having thoughts while Cindy was talking about that meeting, your, your last meeting or potentially first meeting of the year. Would it, and I don't want to tie you up in a bunch of meetings, would it be better to do that alone on the thirtieth by itself without the cash count and do the cash count on July third in the morning? It might help them with their end of day stuff, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Now, we're not sitting here waiting for it to get done.
And both meetings will be probably a matter of minutes, actually, technically.
If we can just, if you want to do that, can we just meet in the morning right away, the thirtieth?
Um, probably. Let me have a talk with Monica for sure and I'll, we'll bring it up again next week. Oh, that's true. I was emailing her though. So I'll email her and ask her if it'd be, cause I had originally told her, well, that meeting on the thirtieth would be in the morning and she said, okay, so maybe we would have.
Let's just burn.
I'll find out for sure. I'll firm that stuff up and make sure that the July third date for the cash count for the treasurer's office would be a better option for them.
It's a deal changer when they haven't been to the bank yet.
Right. It's huge. It's a big deal.
Get a lot smoother.
It's a big deal, so.
They will rush them.
Right.
You know, because they're waiting for that last customer to make sure and then, you know, so.
See what you come up with for next Tuesday and we'll go there.
Yep, let us know next Tuesday.
Let us know.
All right. Or anything else?
What we got for property tax relief?
What do we have?
Yeah. That's a, mine was up to thirty, forty percent.
Oh, that's your assessment. That's not your tax, that's your assessed value.
Over sixty-five, go see Dwayne down there.
There it is.
All right.
Let's see, it goes up every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I'm just quick, that's based on the value of everything around you that went up. I mean, and it's not just everything around Crawford County, it's everything around the state. So when Des Moines is developing great, obviously, or Dallas County is developing great, that's gonna affect your taxes too. Because actually the assessments, Dwayne gathers all the information of what you have. And then he takes it and it goes to the office down there that does the evaluations and then it comes back to us and establishes it. We still control what will be your levy and as long as inflation and everything doesn't basically make it impossible for us to hold the levy rates down, we can actually, whatever your value is, we'll still hold the levy rates down. But there's also a cap on how much you can be charged now, and that's actually been a law passed this year by the State House, so. Don't get in a panic yet. But if you think, if you have a challenge for that valuation, you don't think your house is worth that much or whatever you're talking about, please take it down to Dwayne and, and he can, he can help you with that. You can appeal it one time a year, yeah.
My house was built in eighteen eighty-seven or something with a shell rock. And I went to Area Twelve once to get out when they were giving money out to fix homes. They wouldn't fix mine because they have old foundation.
They're doing that again. You might want to reach out to Region Twelve again. It's the H R V P funds. Can I give them a call? And, uh, up to twenty-five thousand, well, just under.
You bet.
I didn't think it wasn't fair, but I could get in the very twelve.
And part of that's a formula, like you said, that just we see across the county that.
It's across the state.
Dictated by what the state has and how we assess and how we.
A lot of it, you know, in the last, next number of years, you know, how they used to bring, say a hundred and fifty thousand and they were getting two hundred thousand for them, you know.
And that's all part of that equation.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Didn't make anything happen.
Oh, we had a few people who've been upset. You're, you're, you're in a crowd.
By thirty to thirty-five percent.
I bought my house back in eighty-one through a bank, so. I paid five hundred dollars for it. My tax this year was seven hundred. Yeah, so what's, what's your.
I'll trade you, I pay eight hundred a month. Okay, that answer your question?
Yeah.
Hopefully, okay.
The state, money they give, money they spend.
Well. This, this.
I say you guys.
The recent, the recent.
Products are taking it from us to this town.
Don't get us thrown.
And we've already got plenty of issues there.
I was throwing the guy on the raise, pretty soon to share us one of them.
There you go.
Then it goes down to deputy.
There you go. And then everybody on the second floor says, why are they getting so much? And then it just, I talk about that lateral all the time.
You can't get all pretty much the same, it's just.
He's old.
He's getting great, how's that?
He's been here.
He's in his first term.
He's recycled.
I'm recycled.
He's a recycle.
We're in our first term, but it's coming to the end. Kyle's been here.
They built the courthouse around it.
Kyle, help me, the corner's going up.
He's, he's seen it all, heard it all. It was a backstory.
Okay, I'd entertain, if you, if that covers it, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Would we adjourn?
There's been a motion made by Mister Dozar, saying my, Ms. Hayden, and all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Chair votes aye. Have a great day.
Well, we had a meeting on last Thursday, the time of the funds coming in and.